I know there were some concerns mentioned about the menu. But in terms of the kitchen staff, they're scurrying around, they're following their procedures. The kids are doing extremely well. To be honest with you, I'm not sure that I'll ever bring cafeteria tables back. Individual desks are great. They sit in their seats and they stay put, they don't get up for anything. And so lunch has really gone well. If we have the opportunity to make some menu changes, that will just add to the experience. But all in all, things are, I would say, going extremely well at the grade school.
That's great news. It almost sounds as though it was a relief to actually get going after all of your planning, Mr. Lad.
Maybe after day three, I started breathing again, yes.
I'm so glad. Any questions for Mr. Lad from the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Chris. Thank you, Mr. Lad.
Oh, I am on, aren't I?
You are.
I took a different take than what Jeff did, but I have to mirror everything that Jeff said. All of his issues were the middle school issues. His successes have been ours. I decided that I needed to write something because I needed to. So, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share the first weeks of school with you. I usually don't read my statements, but tonight, in order to not miss some important details, I thought that I would, please bear with me. Tuesday, September 8th, was the hardest day of work we have ever had. It felt like it was a year long. It was exhausting, both physically and emotionally. I watched seasoned staff members tear up and walk away. I watched staff members wander, looking for a place to nest, due to the fact that their classrooms are used all day, every day, and now they are itinerant teachers. I met teachers in the bathroom who were crying, really sobbing, hiding from the kids in order to let their emotions out. I watched my staff fall apart at the seams, and I was truly helpless for assistance. Wednesday, September 9th, was one of the most emotional days I've ever spent in a school. And believe me, I've had plenty of emotional days, including a student being murdered and students committing suicide. This day was right up there with those. We sat as a staff in desks, six feet apart with masks on, trying to express our anger, our fear, our frustrations, and our grief. Yeah, our grief. We were, and still are, grieving the educational system we knew and loved. Everything has changed. Everything. By the end of the day, I wasn't sure we could do the job that needed to be done. Thursday, September 10th, I'm not sure why it was better, but it was. Were we getting in our stride? Were we accepting the fact that everything was different and it could not be like it was? Was it because our kids are truly happy to be back? I'm not sure, but it was better. Friday, September 11th, the day the earth stopped for many of us 19 years ago, was an okay day. Kids were settling into a new routine. Parents were actually getting the fact that they were not going to be allowed in the circle to drop off that precious cargo. Cafeteria staff got the kids fed faster and faster and better and better and more efficiently, and dismissal got better. Then came Monday, September 14th, the very first day of remote teaching and learning. Back to day one, almost. Parents who still had not picked up a laptop. Laptop sign-in issues, Google sign-in issues, Power School issues, Google Classroom issues. Kids and parents who wanted immediate answers while the staff was teaching the kids who were sitting in front of them. To say it was difficult is an understatement. I don't know how the staff got through the day, but they did. Kudos to Megan White for the help with everything in the remote world. I could not have done it without her. Today, second Wednesday, what a difference a week makes. Process and planning today. Five in-person school days, five. The Winter Middle School staff has gone from the lowest of lows that I have seen in the 23 years I've been there to a high. Although it's a low-high. We are high. We are working harder than we ever have. We are still here. We are dedicated, and we do have the tenacity to face whatever comes next. We are winter bramblers. Please allow us the continued support to have choices, the time to continue learning how to do education differently. And your support when complaints come directly to you instead of us. I am proud of not only the staff at Winter Middle School, but the Winter Public School staff, and I know that you are too. I double-dog dare any school board member, I double-dog dare you to come follow one of my teachers as they travel in 25 increments, 25-minute increments, pushing a cart through their day. I double-dog dare you, you are welcome to any time to feel what they feel every day. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. And you have always had our support, and we appreciate your leadership. So, please extend that support from the school committee. I think that it goes unknown a lot of the time. But again, please extend that support to that middle school staff of yours. And again, thank you for your leadership, keeping them moving forward. Any other comments for Ms. Chris? Ms. Bells?
I was just wondering if you knew how many remote learners you had?
Sure.
How many homeschoolers?
Yep, I have, right now, total enrollment for the Winter Middle School is 209. Any other year, I'd be jumping. 209, I haven't had over 200 kids in about 10 years. 209, we have 40, perhaps 41 remote. I have had two students leave us to become homeschooled.
Thank you. To come for homeschoolers to come back, yeah?
I have had no, I've had one homeschool student come in for two particular classes who has not been a Winter School student in the past.
Mr. Deanda Whaley, you have a question for Ms. Chris? Oh, I thought I saw your hand up. Any other school committee people, questions for Ms. Chris? Seeing none, Mr. Campbell?
Well, hello there. So, I guess I would agree with my two fellow administrators. I think my staff is equally exhausted, constantly moving as though they're moving on eggshells. But I would think that they will all agree that we have experienced a very positive opening to our school year. So I'm going to begin my comments by taking time to thank some people to help us get to the point where we are so that we can be successful. First, I'm going to thank George Moore and Joel Stoneton, who spent many days rearranging this building to get furniture out of the classroom so that we could maximize the number of student chairs we could get into each classroom. Literally, the days that they were doing this were the hardest days in August. I also want to send a huge shout-out to the owners of the Carlton Factory on the top of the hill on 202. They have donated us some storage space because we did not have room in our building for all the furniture that we needed out of the way. So thank you to those folks. The techies here at the high school, they did an awesome job during our eight days of PD, helping teachers better understand the various aspects, various aspects of Google Classroom, as well as the work they did with Power School and the creation of the teacher webpages. That group includes Tip Shaw, Crystal Anazuski, Ariel Boulet, and Megan White. I also want to thank the members of the high school teacher leadership team and my student leadership team. We took the guidelines set forth in the long form, discussed the impact that that was going to have on our daily school lives. And as a result of that discussion, a video was created. And if you haven't seen it, the video that was shown to the students on opening day is on our webpage. So as our video stated, we are on flight 2021. Our destination is June 2021. Our flight took off on Tuesday, September 8th. I am happy to report the flight is on schedule and without any turbulence to report. The students have come and are very aware of the changes. They are extremely appreciative of the efforts from their teachers to make this flight possible. Being back in school is what they truly want and are willing to do what is necessary to keep each other safe. Josh, I'm going to ask for a student perspective from the high school opening days.
Alrighty, so it was good, I think, overall. But again, we have kind of troubles, like the other administrators have said. Even high schoolers have trouble social distancing in the hallways, you know? I'm very happy with our students because some of our students who had complaints went straight to the principal and told Mr. Campbell that they didn't feel comfortable. And I think that takes a lot of courage as well to go up there. Overall, I think I'd really like to thank my teachers. I think you guys are working extremely hard to keep us distanced in the hallways, to clean, to sanitize. I feel like you guys barely have a bathroom break. You guys are, great job. I really thank you so much for making this year possible. I really appreciate this year and this type of quality of education that I have. And thank you so much also because you guys also have to deal with the remote learning, not deal, have your remote learners and set that schedule. And I know I've heard that Google Meets is a little tougher. But I just, that's about it. But I think overall, it's been, we're getting through it. I'm excited to see what the next week's bringing.
Hey Josh, you probably just made some teachers cry with your appreciation.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions from the high school?
Any questions from the school committee of Mr. Campbell?
Ms. Bells?
Ms. Bells?
I'm just going to ask the enrollment again.
So, I know that we were right around 21, 22. I think remote learners have actually gone up to 25 simply because we've had some students move in from out of state who are quarantining themselves for 14 days before they can stop. Our enrollment, actually, we, over the summer, we lost somewhere around 10 to 15 students, but we have gained them all back. You know, not the same ones, obviously, but our numbers are right back up where they were last year, right around 220.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other school committee questions of Mr. Campbell? Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and please thank your staff.
I will, thank you.
I'm going to hang in there. I'm going to save Mr. Stoneton to the end.
Why would you do that, Ms. Sky?
Well, because I think you have a heck of a lot to talk about this evening. And I thought I'd just give you a rest.
Appreciate that.
Okay, I'm not exactly sure how I'm supposed to term you, but Ms. Erin Weeks. You're on.
Well, I don't have a prepared statement. I just wanted to say that it's been a tough few weeks for the food service staff as well. We're doing everything differently. Not only are we serving everything differently than we ever have before, but all three schools are operating differently. And I feel like some days I spend more time driving in between schools than I do in an office or a kitchen. Even though they're pretty close together, I still spend a lot of time running back and forth. We started off with, the week before school started, we had a new walk-in refrigerator and freezer installed at the grade school, which we very much desperately need and appreciated. But it was installed backwards through no fault of anyone and was a pretty severe problem. Our freezer was refrigerator temperature and our refrigerator was freezer temperature.
Oh.
And that's something that could not be sustained. It was an error, and someone was there working very late at night, as was Mr. Lad, trying to get it all straightened out. So we weren't even sure, the Friday before Labor Day weekend, if we were going to have refrigeration on Tuesday, the first day of school. They told us not to use it, even though we had huge deliveries coming in. And you know, you have to find a place to put 55 cases of milk. You can't just keep that in your household refrigerator. So it was a struggle with that. I didn't have a heart attack, but I thought I was going to when I found that out. We began the school year trying to keep things as simple as possible with so many kids at the grade school and such a small space to feed them in. We decided to make it simple and serve cold sandwiches. Apparently, that was a decision that is very much unappreciated in the community. I was thinking, it's still warm weather and a cold sandwich would be okay. They're still getting the same nutritional amounts. They're getting fresh fruits and vegetables and a choice of white milk or chocolate milk and a choice of a kind of sandwich every day. We were trying to keep it simple and keep it kid-friendly. We're not doing anything fancy or exotic or that requires a lot of cooking. We just wanted to get all of the kids in there and get them fed. And I didn't want to make promises I couldn't keep. You know, it's fun to have the first day, have the kids, you know, get chicken nuggets or something that's their favorite food on the first day. But if you can't deliver that to all the kids in the same way, you don't want to deliver great chicken nuggets for the first 100 kids and then run out or have them not be warm or have them be overcooked. So we tried to keep it simple at the grade school because we really didn't even know how many kids were coming to school. At the middle school, we're doing four entrees a day. We're doing too cold and too hot. And at the high school, we're doing a varied menu. We have sometimes as many as five entrees. Amazingly enough, the high school is the one where there's the least participation. They have the most options, but the fewest kids are coming to eat, even though it's free to everyone. So we'd like to see that increase. Josh, tell all your friends to come get some free food. That would be great if we just got a little bit more participation there. Things seem to be going pretty well at the middle school and high school, but we've gotten a lot of pretty nasty complaints, I guess, on Facebook and in person and some letters to me about the horrific food we're serving at the grade school. So I realize that maybe a ham and cheese sandwich is not the favorite thing of some kids, and some kids might take a bite and throw it away. But I've also seen them take a bite of chicken nuggets and throw the rest away too. Sometimes the kids would just rather fool around than eat. And if they're hungry, they'll eat. If they're not hungry, they won't eat. There's nothing we can do about it once they have it. But I'd like to answer anyone in the community who wants to ask me why we're having cold food. There's a number of long answers to that. You know, it's staffing, it's the facility, it's seven lunches back-to-back. There's many different reasons. I'd like to answer that question to anyone that I can. Let me turn on the chat here and answer that. The high school menu is not posted. There's a couple of reasons for this. It wasn't actually posted last year either. The kids don't look at the menu, they come and look at the food. So we do hand-write a menu every day in the high school. We do have a wide variety of options, and there just doesn't seem to be an easy way to post that. I want to liken it to a restaurant that is serving the chef's special every day. We have five or six chef specials. There's always a chef salad, there's always two kinds of cold sandwiches, there's always some sort of pizza or something in the pizza family. There's always some sort of chicken, like a chicken patty sandwich or chicken nuggets or chicken fingers. So we follow the same pattern. It's just that those actual items vary from day to day. Does that answer your question?
It answers all of my questions. Oh, I do have one question for you, Chef Erin. Did I see earlier that we were going to try to deliver lunches to our remote learners?
I mean, it's not a delivery, it's a pickup. At this point, all remote learners are allowed to get breakfast and lunch for the next day. They pick it up at the high school. The high school is the most accessible as far as cars getting to the kitchen. And because the high school students leave earlier in the day than the grade school, we decided to use that site so that a car can pull up to the back door of the high school. And the food, they call, they say, oh, this is the Jones family. We're picking up meals for two. And the phone is answered and the meals are immediately brought out to their car. And it's just sort of a quick delivery system. I have tried to compile a list of all parents who are on, have remote students, of all of their emails. And I've emailed as many parents as I can get their email. Many of them don't even have an email in Power School. But if you know anyone that wants to receive these remote meals, all I have to do is email them the instructions. And then they sign up with me as well. They sign up by noon on Friday for the entire following week. So that means that they're going to get 10 meals. And because of the kitchens being closed on Wednesday, on Monday, they pick up for Tuesday, on Tuesday, they pick up for Wednesday, and Thursday. On Thursday, they pick up for Friday, and Friday, they pick up for Monday. And again, it is both breakfast and lunch. It includes all the components of a meal, you know, that we can serve cold as far as sandwiches, cereal, cereal bars, bagels, juice, two milks for each. There's a good number of those. I see someone else is asking about the grade school menu again. Do you have any more questions about the remote?
No, go ahead. I know there's a question as to whether or not the menu will be expanded at the grade school eventually.
Well, if beyond sandwiches, do they mean beyond cold food? I intend to add hot sandwiches, like chicken sandwiches and hamburgers, into the menu. I did not want to put that on the September menu till I could see how I could do it. So I made the September menu all cold sandwiches so that we could get up and running. If I had been able to only post a week's menu at a time, I would have. But at this point, we're still dealing with food safety issues with, if we were to make, say, 300 portions of a hot entree, keeping that food at the proper temperature until it's delivered to the children. When we don't have our steam table anymore, the children are seated and the food goes out on a cart that, you know, we deliver the food personally to the kids, kind of like the airline hostess going down the aisle with all the options. We do it that style so that the kids can remain seated. And we want to be sure that we're handling hot food at the proper temperatures. So I don't want kids to be getting a cold hamburger, for example, because we don't have access to our warmer and steam table when we're serving this. So that's a problem I am trying to solve, and I'm doing the best that I can with that. I see someone asked about more than sandwiches, salads. We did run a chicken Caesar salad every Monday during the last school year, and there was not a huge amount of participation in that. That's something that if you only have two entrees a day, to have that take up, you know, 50%, it makes it, I don't know how to say this, but if the first entree has to be really, really popular to have salad as the second entree, because so few kids are interested in getting it. Does anyone else want to ask me questions?
I have a question that's not about food.
Okay.
Well, I can wait if it needs to be.
Go ahead, Ms. Sky.
So Ms. Sky brought me out to see the refrigerator, freezer area. And my first concern, having worked in a restaurant forever and having to run outside to get things, was the lack of sort of a roof between that. And I just worry about winter and rainy weather, and rain not so much. I know it takes not a lot to get there, but I just wonder if there was any, or if there is a plan to put any type of a roof between that so that it's protected, because that is going to get icy in the winter and all that.
Yes, we have, from the beginning, discussed a roof. It was not something that I got approval for prior to June 30th. And frankly, since then, there's been a lot bigger fires on my part than getting the roof built out there. I think it would be great if we could get approval to have a roof built. It's just not something I've gotten to yet. And I'm afraid it might be even difficult to find a builder that's going to do that for us. It was something that we hoped we could get done over the summer, and just, you know, it didn't come about.
Right. Just make sure you got plenty of salt back there.
I see Mr. Lad wants to address that too. Go ahead.
It's on our list, but it's going to be an October project.
Oh yeah, that's great. It was just one thing that I sort of noticed, and I hope that maybe down the road, it would get, even if it didn't happen this year. But having had to run back and forth to get things quickly and just feared for the slipperiness of that without a roof. So that's awesome, that's hopefully in the plan down the pike. Thank you.
Chef Erin, I was wondering, how many lunches do you serve at the grade school? How many, I mean, how many sessions? You have like-
There are seven different lunch periods if you count serving the preschool in the classroom. So that's six of them in the cafeteria. And Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, that they're still sending one grade lunches in the classroom a day. So we're using both the cafeteria space and the stage. And we don't have a lot of time in between lunches. So there's not, you know, under normal circumstances, when you're, you know, in the little kitchen and the kids are eating, then the other staff are there, right there, putting more food in the oven, getting ready for the next lunch. We don't really have that recoup time. And that's another issue that we're, you know, that I have to solve in order to serve hot food. I need to have somebody in the kitchen who is just constantly preparing food for the next lunch while the first lunch is going on. And it's been taking all of my staff to serve the lunch that's going on.
So everyone needs to understand that Chef Erin is delivering lunch, seven different sessions at the grade school. Every child is being served. They're not up going into a- They're not up going into a line and getting their own lunches. And for that reason, she's doing cold sandwiches at the moment. And as a school board, as a school committee member, I, I support you greatly, Ms. Weeks, in all of your efforts to feed a substantial and federally approved nutritional meal to all of our children in this COVID time, which is new to you all. So thank you so very much.
And it's free.
And it's free. And it's free. Absolutely. Any school board members have any questions for Ms. Weeks? Thank you very much, Ms. Weeks.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Delisle. Hi, Mr. Delisle. You're on. Whoops, we lost your video.
Sorry, let me unmute myself.
There we go.
So we've been busy for the past six or so weeks, like Jeff said earlier, getting laptops ready. Got that completed before school started. Got laptops out to all of the high school, all of the middle school, three through five. And, and then we got Chromebooks ready for kindergarten through second grade for all of our remote learners. We're still waiting on some devices that were ordered back in June, which would be Chromebooks, should we ever go red, for pre-K through second grade. And then we've had a few bumps in the road, you know, with device connectivity, access to Gmail, access to Power School over the past couple of weeks. But other than that, I think it's gone fairly well. And we're just continuing to deal with some issues. And, and hopefully, things will slow down here in the next week or so. And, and we can start focusing on looking towards the future and improving our technology, infrastructure, and then looking at getting some E-Rate funding to help improve infrastructure at all the schools.
You're gonna do the E-Rate application all yourself there, Mr. Delisle?
I have in the past, for the past six or seven years. I think I'll employ, just because it's three schools, and it'll be a little bit more complex. We have a third party that will actually help me through that process. And they are actually charging a very small fee, from what I've seen in the past. Usually, most parties will take a percentage of the money. This particular party is a small fee for all of the district, rather than a percentage of the money awarded.
Great. Any questions from the school committee of Mr. Delisle? Thanks, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you.
Ms. Fawcett.
Well, I first wanna say, Winthrop Public Schools has an amazing special ed team. They have, I think, when Ms. Chris read her statement, I think "a year like no other" is an understatement. We've had some special ed staff in some of those very hot days that we had last week. In, when I say full PPE, I'm talking full PPE. They were wearing shields, masks, gloves, gowns, outside at recess, and sweating, to the point that they were standing in front of air conditioners just to cool down because they were sweating so bad. They have been flexible. They have been encouraging to one another. And they're making it work. I can't ask for a better team to be working with. With that being said, we've had some flexibility in moving some staff around to accommodate. At this point, I would say that we have a full special ed team, even though we have some open positions. At this time, we're not anticipating filling those because of some moves that have happened from students. And some coming in, we've shifted some of our educational technicians to different buildings. And so it's working right now. So we are down, I think we have two or three open positions that, right now, we're not anticipating filling. Other than that, we're just trying to find our way and get through sort of the start of the school year and make things work, making connections with our remote students. We, when I last looked, we had about 20% of our special ed students were actually participating remotely. And we're right around the 100 mark of students in special education. So we've had five students move from in-person instruction to home-schooled instruction this year. And so we've had a little bit of a shift there. Any questions for me from the committee?
Wow, getting off easy, Ms. Fawcett. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Is Mr. Farr with us this evening? Guess not. Mr. Courier with us this evening? Okay. Ms. White? Here she comes.
Before, before Ms. White speaks, Mr. Allen is with us, if you wanna hear from him.
Why do I keep on saying Mr. Courier?
Well, he's our local guy.
Yeah. Ms. White, would you allow me to have Mr. Allen on first? Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen?
Muted still, Larry.
Hello.
There you are.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. There, there you are.
Yeah.
How are you tonight, Mr. Allen?
I'm, I'm good, I'm good. We're, we're making progress. You know, obviously, I've spent a lot of time in Winthrop, you know, with the steering committee, and as we've been ramping up, and, you know, new additions and subtractions and changes, and pulling apart the roots and building the roots. And, you know, our team has been very strong. They're, they're happy to serve again, they're happy to see the kids. And when you refer to Mr. Courier, that's Al Courier, who runs, he's, he is our division manager. I've just had more of a hand in this transition into the new way of doing-
I have, I apologize for that, Mr. Allen.
Oh, you don't have to apologize at all, so. Ridership has been low. You know, we were, we look at our, our, the route plans that we put together, and some of our target numbers on the buses are, you know, if you look at the run sheets, there could be as many as 25, 28. You know, sometimes 30, if you have, you know, a large population at the daycares, you know, these, these cohorts that are all kind of loading together. But the, the ridership has been, you know, hovering around the 10 to 15 mark. It did bump up a little bit this week. And, and I'm expecting it to continue to bump up as the comfort level with the systems and the flow go. I think the, potentially, the, the little bit later bus routes on the grade school side of things may be a deterrent. We've, we've gotten some negative feedback from the community about, you know, just loading the children too late so parents can't, you know, get to work for eight, because a lot of the loading is taking place after 8:00 AM on the grade school side of things. And so that's been an adjustment and a shift. But I think as, I, I do believe that as we continue to, to go along, every day, we're seeing, you know, notes of folks that are, are returning to in-person from, from remote. And it's, it's a drip, right? It's, it's one or two from one or two of the buildings. But as, I think as the community's confidence in, in what we're doing, or what you guys are, are doing in the buildings increases, a lot of those outliers are gonna, are gonna kind of resume, you know, work their way back into the building and start working their way back into the services that you provide, you know, riding, riding the buses. So I think, I think we probably, I think we're gonna see an increase here over the next couple of weeks, frankly. And we'll just kind of have to ride it out and see how that goes.
Thank you. And all of our students are being very cooperative in hand sanitizing on and off, and mask-wearing, and separating themselves on the bus. That's all going well.
We, yes, they've, you know, they've been taking instruction well. We have been carrying additional masks with us. And we have had to supply masks on a number of occasions. But they're having, you know, nobody's dug their heels in and said, I'm not wearing it. My mom, you know, told me I didn't have to, none of that. Very respectful. So it's been, you know, I just think it's, everybody's learning how to do this the way we do this now. So, yeah, it's been going well.
Thank you. Any more questions from the school committee? Or Mr. Allen? Wow, again, Mr. Allen, pretty easy. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Ms. White, you're on.
Awesome. So I've been working across all three buildings, kind of in a situation like Mr. Delisle and Ms. Weeks, where I've been spreading my time across, working with teachers. And I just wanna echo some of the building principals' announcements and that we have a super dynamic staff who are working so hard right now. And as my role right now is currently trying to help with transitions into remote learning and remote teaching, I think that I just want to quadruple that for the staff that I'm working with. The three teachers at the grade school are very dynamic. They've set schedules that involve synchronous and asynchronous pieces. I'm, I'm really proud of the work that they've done. At the middle school, those teachers, as Ms. Chris said, have hit the ground running this Monday and Tuesday. And I don't think necessarily any of our safety protocols and some of the things that we've put in place are absolutely perfect right now. And so things are still a little bit in flux when it comes to some of those things. But our teachers are working really hard to make sure that that communication piece between families and students and themselves is helping, you know, really strong in helping them to kind of move forward from there. And so I think that we're off to a great start with remote. It did start this Monday. So as we're having discussions, I do wanna kind of make sure that we keep that kind of in the forefront, is that first through, well, the high school had started earlier. But if we're looking at first through eight, that they've really stepped into this this week. And as we're dealing with technology and getting used to managing this, that we are kind to those teachers and ask before we assume, as a community and as fellow educators, if we're, if we're not quite sure. But I think we're off to a great start. I think our numbers are solidifying a little bit. Maybe like Transportation said, there might be a shift here or there. But they've stayed pretty consistent over the last couple of days across the district.
So for, for parents that are feeling the frustration of their child not being able to get on, how would you suggest that they proceed? Should they try to give you a call, or the building principals a call, before, before they explode?
You know, I think that technology is very challenging. And we handed out devices, but that doesn't mean we handed out a how-to manual. And so I think that it's fair to say that there would definitely, and potentially be some frustrations with some of those. Any big-picture things, I would definitely not mind sorting through those. And so if families want to discuss the programming or are having some issues with technology, there are a handful of things that I can do to support them before moving them into communicating with Mr. Delisle. So my advice would be reach out to me, and I can do some delegating as far as how to best support those families.
Great, thank you. School committee members have questions for Ms. White? Ms. White, just so I'm sure, we don't intend to do remote PK, correct?
No, that was a shift that we made after talking a little bit about what that programming is and what those goals are for those students, and whether that would be able to be done really successfully remotely. So we did take that off the docket, yes.
So we're doing all of our PK in person? Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. White. Mr. Stoneton, let me ask you, if you, if you want to say anything about the start of school, or do you want to reserve your comments for, you know, the discussion that's coming up shortly?
I, I think everything's going well. There's no issues to report from the neck of the woods.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stoneton.
Thank you for asking.
Oh, my pleasure indeed. We're gonna move on then to old business. So I anticipate some discussion from the community on this. I, I wanna remind you that, of a couple of things. First off, the chat is not your Facebook. So I don't need Facebook kinds of comments on the chat. Secondly, if someone has already expressed your feelings, we don't need to see them over and over and over again. So with, having said that, and reserving the right to make a couple more comments as we go along, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with high school fall sports and adopt the regulations that were set forth by the MPA and the Joint Committee. Some moved. Second? It's been moved and seconded. Before we go into a discussion by the school board members, we'll entertain some, we'll entertain comments in the public. So this is your opportunity to just give us your comments to inform the school committee as they will start to discuss a little bit later on this particular motion. So for those of you that wish to make a comment on this particular motion, please write your comment, or type out your comment, and send it to us. And as I wait for those to happen, I, I want to, I have a comment here. How many PK, how many pre-K students have we lost? And I think that that's written, that's, that's lost because we haven't offered remote. So maybe, Ms. White, you can help me with that? Or, or any of the principals, well, Mr. Lab, have we lost any PK students because we're not offering a remote option?
We gave all of the families that had selected the remote option, the opportunity to join in-person. And then if they, we had, I think, I think two agreed to come to the in-person program, and the others declined to join us. And so they will be added to the end of the waitlist. Starting next week, we do have a waitlist. So we'll be able to fill in the empty slots that we currently have with people off the waitlist.
And that's a waitlist for what?
For preschool.
Okay. Thank you. I'm amazed that, I'm thinking that something's wrong with my comment, my chat here, because I'm not seeing a list of comments. So, well, I'll cut off, well, I don't want to. Josh, do you have some comments that you wish to share that are from the student body? Explain to us how you've gotten them. And then we'll have your personal comments, along with the rest of the school board comments, in a few minutes.
Yes, I do, sorry. I, I just refrained from typing it in, because I, I have a lot.
No, I, I didn't mean for you to have to type in. I, you know.
It's okay. No, I just, I wanted to give other people the opportunity. But I guess, I guess this'll spark a conversation, maybe. So I just, I also wrote down some stuff. Basically, I'm gonna be representing some of the views of the student, of the Winthrop High School students, and their views on high school sports. and their views on high school sports. So I recently sent out a survey to all Winthrop high schoolers, all four grades, about whether we should have high school sports or not. And, sorry, I also, really quick, I'd like to thank my friend, Amelie Groob, because she, she really, she's part of the student leadership team, and she was really a big help. But first off, I'm just gonna try my best not to let my emotions on the subject cloud my judgment. Being the student rep, I'm just gonna present you this hard data and what the students gave back to me. And so basically, how the survey works is we gave them, I can actually even read it to you, and I have all the results here. I closed responses like earlier today, just to give people. So if you, if I have a lot of responses, I'm gonna try to get through a lot of them without boring you guys. So basically, this survey starts off that we give them a little bit of information. It reads, "We are very lucky to live in the state, in a state and a country, in a county, sorry, county, there's very few COVID cases. There's, there have been practices and games and all over the summer, and it's been fairly safe. We could start the season and make changes as necessary based on things that happen throughout the state. If fall sports and games are allowed, we will become, we will be coming into contact with different communities and increasing risk of an outbreak. If we were to, if that were to occur, we would have to return to remote learning, and we may be putting high-risk people in serious danger. Keep in mind that our school system is very fortunate to be attending school four days a week. If there's any case in any district, oh, is there any case in a district that we may have come in contact with, we will most likely be shut down. We all understand that this is a very difficult decision, and we want to do what's best for the physical and mental health of all our students and staff. If we do have sports, all athletes will have to try their best to follow safety restrictions and be patient. If we don't, we will try to set an intramural sports or that allows students to be active while maintaining safe spacing. Please take a moment to think about your opinion, about your opinion and the options that will affect our community as a whole before responding to the survey. Your voice is important. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Anyway-
You're doing great, Josh. You're doing great.
Okay, so basically, out of all the students that we have at the high school, I feel we're not knowing the exact number, but we got 91 responses. All right. We got 91 responses. And right now, and actually, I'm, this, this may be a little bit, yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, we got 91 responses. So 59 of them pointed to yes, and 32 of them pointed to no. That was the first question. We also came with a second question. And the, and so basically, at the end, it says, "Questions, concerns, or quote for a student representative, Josh D.W., to present to the school board." And so here's where we're getting all our student voices coming out and just saying what they think about the topic. And a lot of them are really strong, and I really encourage everyone to, this, like, listen. Anyway, I guess I can continue on. A lot of them are kind of long. I've tried to narrow down the best ones from each side. I'll tell you right now that, sorry, I have data all over the place, I'm very mixed up. But I'll tell you right now, that out of the people who voted yes, which was 50, the 59 of them, right, only 13 of them had had a written response. And that's including some of, some responses that may seem silly to some of us. So I'll probably get through, through all of those, because those are kind of shorter. But the ones that pointed into the no, which was 29 of them, which, sorry, sorry, 30 of them, right? Is that what he said? Ooh, sorry, 32, 32 of them. Out of those 32 that pointed to, to no, 19 of them, 19 voted, 19 had a nice response, and those are the, some of the ones that I have to narrow down because a lot of them are very, I guess you could say there's, there's a lot of content to them. And a lot of them reflected the same amount of ideas and whatnot, so I don't want to become redundant or repetitive. So if you kind of do the math-ish, I did the math with like, I don't know, lower numbers, I guess, because I did this the night before and before I had closed the polls, but I didn't get any more written responses since then. But last night, when I had 29 of the no's and 19 of the yes, 29 of the people who voted no and 19 comments, if you do that math, it's 66%. So 66% of the people who voted no wrote a response. And then out of 57, which, these are the numbers from yesterday, but still, again, the comments never went up. Out of 57 comments for pointing to yes, only 13 people wrote. Only 13 people took the time to write a quote and write a response as to why they think they should. Now, I, I'm not gonna try to discredit any student in their opinion, because I don't think that would be very fair of me. But some of them are one-word responses in the yes, so I'm gonna try to refrain from those. Some of them are just, just views, and I'm not gonna lie, I got some, because this, this survey was completely anonymous. I couldn't see anybody's name or their email that was linked attached to it. But anyway, some of the comments, like, were very strong, and some language, not too terrible, but just like the beginning of a word, that's not a vulgar word. But anyway, so I guess getting into it, I feel like I'm taking up a lot of time. I'll just read some of these comments that really stuck out to me and whatnot, and I guess I'll start out with, I'll start with the four sports, because this is what I have. So this was response six. People in Winthrop, and some, some signed their names, sorry. And most were anonymous, but some signed their names. So, "People in Winthrop would get incredibly bored without football." Peter Rupchnick. Response 18. This shouldn't even be a question. Response 23. Mommas has already said that they would have fall sports, so if Winthrop says no, they'd continue their season without us. Response 25. I feel like there should definitely be some regulation and protocol if sports happen this fall. I would start, I would start out with caution and see how everything works, but I feel like we should be prepared to shut the season down if it seems things aren't working out. I also think we should be more careful that we, in sports that are more contact-heavy. Lastly, I think that we should definitely be able to have plays and theater performances. It would be unfair to allow sports and not theater, since sports are, for the most part, far more contact-heavy than theater. I'm not sure if this has already been discussed, and then they just want to, I just wanted to get my opinion out there. Response 30. Sports meant a lot to me, especially my senior season, and, and often, and in these times, kids really need an outlet to get off, to get off steam. If football has already been switched to spring, I don't see why there's a reason we can't switch all fall sports to spring and then all spring sports to fall. If the fall sports, no, if the spring sports, since the spring sports are far less of a risk to spread the coronavirus, our community, our community would be at a way lesser risk if all schools could collaborate and make this happen. I think this would be the best of both worlds. Okay, I'm gonna skip around. 76. My reason that we should have sports is that sports play a big role in a lot of students' lives. Can, I can get their, I can get their grades up and help them out with mental health, because all athletes dedicate their sports to, their life to sports. And if they don't have it, it can seriously mess them up, because they don't have nothing besides work and school. Don't rob them out of their last years of playing competitive sports. I know this is a tough decision, but I feel like students at Winthrop deserve a chance to play sports, especially for the seniors, because it can be their last time playing the sport they love. Number 82. Football. Number 83. This, the only things, the only thing that is tough is that when we're wearing masks and running a lot, is that I probably will get lightheaded and not be able to breathe at all. Response 90. Students who are concerned about catching COVID do not have to play. And that's about it for the sports comments. I skipped a few that were kind of shorter. About it. Okay. All right. So now continuing to no sports. These are a bit longer. I'm gonna just, I highlighted the few that I think are really powerful, or, I don't know, a lot of them were the same, had like same views, so I cut some that were similar. But anyway, so, response number eight. "As much as I would love to have a fall sports season, I would much rather be able to get an in-person education safely and skip the fall season rather than risk an outbreak. It's a challenge not to be able to use the locker rooms after school, not being able to drive myself or always get rides, and I have heard many complaints from my teammates about their ability to breathe with a mask on and a mouthguard. But with that being said, I will support any decision made and assume that it was the best one. But having high-risk relatives makes, having high-risk relatives, this makes me a little bit of an, this makes it a little bit of an easier decision for me." Response nine. "I feel that some sports can go like golf and cross-country, but most shouldn't. Here's my quote. As many of our teachers at Winthrop High School say, there's a reason that student comes first and student athlete. We are students first and athletes second. We've worked so hard to make it this far to get in school and get to as close as normal as possible. And we want to throw that away for a few sports games with no fans and no playoffs? I'm a senior. I understand why people want to play so badly. This is supposed to be our year. I've been looking forward to this year since my eighth grade, since eighth grade. But to me, I don't want to have to worry about the constant threat of getting COVID and having to make the whole school go fully remote just to play a few games. That won't mean anything." This quote, there was a name sign to it, and Jake Smith, and I'd like to say, I'd like to congratulate him, because it's really hard to put your voice out there, especially sign a name to it. It's easy to just say it anonymously. Response 11. "As much as I love my fall sport, I'd rather have an in-school education than be sent home because we have played a school who got a case." Response 15. "Hi, please relay this message for me. If a fall sport were to happen and Winthrop schools are made to switch online, it would be putting students at a disadvantage. I, for one, struggled with remote learning, and I believe that it would be both inappropriate and hypocritical for the public school system to put athletics over my education." Our response 19. "Although I would love to play this fall, I can't help but feel that we would be working backwards if we are taking all these strict precautions at school and then allowing students to, to be close in contact with each other, and even students from other schools. I feel that if we have a season, I feel if we do have a season, a student in one of the schools, I feel if we do have a season, and a student in one of the schools we play at some point gets COVID, and then they send us back into a waiting period, which is honestly, I'm sorry, this one skips around." I'm sorry. Um, I feel that we should be sent back into a waiting period, which is, that we would be sent back into a waiting period, which is honestly much worse than just knowing that it's gonna happen. If we allow, if we had a fall season and somebody were to get sick with COVID and spread it to other students, not only would it affect our sports, but it would also affect the kids who don't play sports and are taking every precaution to be safe, and that doesn't seem fair to them. I will respect whatever decision is made, but as a three-sport athlete, I will say that not having a fall sport, a fall season seems like the safest idea for not only our athletes, but also our student bodies as a whole, not to mention the teachers and family members this would also affect. Okay. Response 31. "Our teachers and staff are working so hard to make sure Winthrop students are safe and healthy, and most importantly, getting an, a good in-person education. It would be completely unfair if all, if, to all Winthrop staff and students if you decide to allow fall sports. You're not just putting the health and education of Winthrop High School students at risk, but you are also endangering the mental health of middle and grade schoolers, who, by the way, would not be at fault if they were, if we were to shut down due to sports. Please listen to the students who really care about their education." Number 38. "It would be sad if we didn't get to play our last fall season of high school sports. That being said, I think a majority of athletes understand that while it is sad and unfortunate that we may get to, that we may not get to play, there's something bigger at hand. It is something that is out of our control, and as a student-athlete, one learns to put academics first. If our grades aren't taken seriously, we don't get to play. Notice how we are not athletes first, we are students first. At this point in time, we are some of the most fortunate students in the state, because we are back in school four days a week. Some kids only get, some students are only getting two days. I would feel so guilty if a COVID-19 outbreak occurred in our school because of a game we played. The bottom line is my, I value my in-person learning more than I value athletics. So if we can only choose one, that is my answer. But if there's a way to make it safe for everyone directly impacted, and especially for those individuals who are indirectly impacted, I choose, indirectly affected, I choose both." Okay. Comment 88. "I think that right now, a lot of student-athletes are in the same boat when it comes to having sports. Most athletes that I have seen have a lot of passion for the sports they play. I personally have grown up with soccer, and it has been such a big part of my life ever since my first memories. Not being able to play last season was really difficult for me and drove me even more to become a better, to become better for this year. But despite the work I've put in throughout my life, that has, but despite the work I've put in throughout my life, that was all led up to my senior season, I still don't think it's worth jeopardizing the safety and education of so many people to, of so many people. For a lot of students and teachers, remote learning was a really difficult time that felt nowhere near as productive as seeing each other in school. The staff and medical specialists worked all summer to make sure that kids would be able to come back safely and be in a learning environment again. I know how important sports are to a lot of students, but I also know how much value our, how much we value our education and the health of our family members. I'm extremely scared that a healthy student-athlete who is at very low risk from COVID becomes asymptomatic, becomes an asymptomatic carrier, and an outbreak happens without us being able to catch it, without us being to catch it beforehand. I'm scared that I will contract the virus and bring it home to my at-risk parents. One sports season is not worth putting my family's lives at risk. I'm not sure I will get a choice if the season happens. We've all grown up through high school as students and athletes, and have always been told our education comes before sports. Deciding to play this year, to play this sport, deciding to play this year would be in direct opposition of that. Playing sports this fall would put the education and safety of so many people at risk. I simply cannot see how it is worth for a promised sports season, how it's worth for a compromised sports season, where we are simply playing so that we can compete with others. This can be done within our communities without posing great threats to such important pieces of all our lives." Winthrop senior. So that's what I have for some of the comments. I'm sorry, I'm sitting at computers kind of hard. I just, I just, I guess I think we should listen. I think a lot of our students here are very passionate on the subject, and we should listen to what they have to say. I think both sides have great points. It's a tough decision, and I think as students, we have a hard time speaking up. I personally am allowed to speak up in a few minutes and give my opinion. And I found that that was very difficult for me this year. And actually, I, I'd really like to thank my coach and my teammates who are gonna, who are actually, I have to talk to, and I, they- and they, they're supporting me right now and they know which way I'm gonna go and they just didn't question it and they're supporting me. So thank you for that. It's making this a lot easier. But I know that it's hard for everyone to speak up and especially these teenage students. So I congratulate all the people who spoke up in this survey and I hope for whatever's best. Alrighty, so that's my comment.
Josh, thank you very much. You are a giant among students and you're quite right. It's very difficult even for adults that are four or five times older than you to, to speak up. And so I commend you and compliment you and encourage you to continue. Thank you to all the students, if any of them are listening, and if not, Josh, please can convey these thoughts that the school committee is very appreciative for the student input. And we need for folks to continue to speak up in our country as well as our school. I'll continue with the community comments. We've had a couple of them come in while Josh was, was sharing the student comments and so I will read those from Ms. Ross. As the school nurse at the middle school and high school, I would like to see fall sports at Winthrop not happen. From Kristen Ross, positivity rates for Maine are currently well below 1%. Let that sink in, less than 1% of people tested are actually infected. Of that, the percentage suffering, serious consequences from the virus are extremely low. Our children have been used as pawns by the government. Stopping them from playing is not based on science, it's based on fear. These children have been working in essential jobs through the pandemic. Sports, including high-contact sports, ice hockey and soccer, have been playing all summer without outbreaks across counties, across states. Please do not forget the mental health of our children. From Dr. McConnell, some of these kids are smarter than, whoops, are smarter than adults. There is more and more scientific data coming out that the supports spread in sports teams in other parts of the country. There is, okay, I'm, I'm gonna try that again. There is more and more scientific data coming out that supports spread in sports teams in other parts of the country. I am concerned about the mental health of everyone in our community. We need to continue to do all we can to keep our rates as low as possible so that students can remain in school. It is true that the state overall, we have a 0.6% positivity rate. However, Kennebec County is 0.98% and it will only take a blink of the eye for that to grow if we are not really cautious. Asteroid, COVID spreading in other parts of the country due to sports. That's the end of the comments. Thank you, community members, for your comments. Now, closed community comments. And now it is for the discussion of the school committee and eventual vote on the motion, which is to move forward with high school fall sports and adopt the regulations that were set forth by the M E A and the joint committee.
Ms. Guyer, is it worth taking a moment to point out what that joint committee is? Because there's been some misrepresentation of who does support the N P A's regulations.
Yeah, there are some surprising supports and non-supports. And before I open it up, I guess, to all the school committee people, I think that we should hear a comment from you, Joel, and we should hear a comment or statement from the superintendent as well.
Well, I think you guys got my thirty-some odd page memo. And that's, you know, it is kind of funny, but at the same time, I think it's important to realize that that's what we're trying to navigate through. You know, obviously, it was quite a surprise for the D O E to come back and put a rubber stamp on this because what they ask us to do during the day is completely opposite of what they're allowing in the afternoon. I think it's important to note that the M S M A, the Maine Superintendent's Association, as well as the Maine School Board Association does not support this. That they feel that the D O E regulations that they're enforcing during the day don't pass the straight face test of what we're doing in the afternoon. And I know that's a phrase that everybody's using because it's true. I think personally for myself, as an athletic director, I'm glad to see that we do have some of these regulations that would allow students to do sports. As I said to the steering committee last week though, I am, as the dean of students, who just gave up his whole summer to put our kids in a safe situation by designing classrooms, coming up with long-term forums to return to school. I'm embarrassed that we're asking the community to think that this is okay. If you do do this, and I think you guys know from my memo, and it is in writing that I am trying to present everything to you in a neutral state because I feel that's my job. Should you want my opinion, I will certainly give that to you. I do think it's important to really take a look at ourselves and say, what do we represent as a school? From seven to two o'clock every day, we don't allow adults into our school because we're trying to protect our children. But now we're saying at the end of the day that it's okay to go out, take your mask off and, and be with other community members. So I think that it's really important that if we decide to go this route, that we're gonna have to be able to defend while we're doing that, number one, and that's okay. But number two, I think it's really important that we take a moment to reflect and see if we're going to adjust our long form. Our long form states very clearly that anytime that you are on student, a student or staff on school grounds, that you have to wear a mask. That is not up for negotiation. As a matter of fact, it's in there two different times in the long form. That's been voted on and accepted twice. To me, that sends the message that that's certainly something that we value. Again, if that's something that we decide to go the other way, that's fine. Those will be my marching orders. However, I just want to say as somebody that spent my whole summer putting that together and reviewing multiple times, that I would have, I would lose quite a bit of faith that we would not follow through on something that we said was the most valuable document to reopen school. Taking that a step further, Joe, you sent me a couple of questions today, just in response to my memo. It's, it will be a Herculean effort to take this on and I want to clarify some things because in the last twenty-four hours, not only have I been publicly attacked, but people have been doing so on misinformation. When I said that I had too much on my plate that was taken out of context in a newspaper article, when I have, I say I have too much on my plate, that's, I'm having a hard time getting the fields ready. George is being pulled off of tasks in the school so he can put goals together because we just found out last week. That's not a woes me, that's a clarification. That's my problem to deal with because this is my job. However, I do want to say very clearly that the information I was relaying in that article is, I do not have the manpower to follow through the regulations that if you decide to go forward with fall sports that we have to follow. And if you'll remember from the memo, M S M A said, we're only gonna cover you guys if you do what's asked from D H H S, which is that document from the N P A that came out last week. In order for us to do that, we are gonna have to reach into our pockets because we're gonna need more manpower. Yes, I can get creative with that. That's a whole different discussion. But we are gonna need porta-potties for both teams because we do, we do not have locker rooms. We will need people that will monitor people entering and exiting. If you, if you had a chance to read the guidelines, and please don't feel guilty if you didn't because they were a different set per sport. For team sports, I am required to have someone at the timing and the substitution station as well as the home and away. I'm also required to have somebody that monitors the field to make sure that we're under 100 people, which is a whole different discussion from the Mountain Valley Conference anyways. When you start talking about away games, you're now talking about one bus, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, that you can send. So if you're talking about sports six through twelve, that's not a reality. If you're talking about playing on Wednesdays and Thursdays, because we, excuse me, Wednesdays and Saturdays, because we have more buses, you can certainly have that conversation. But I can tell you that the twelve out of the fifteen high schools that are playing in the Mountain Valley Conference not only have the same problem, but two of the schools are not playing after October eighth because they don't have transportation or the coaches to do so. So as we go down this road, what I'm not doing a good job spitting out that I'm really trying to get to is, the one thing that I ended my memo was that I asked you, that's all I've asked and I will do whatever because that is my job, whether I support this or not. If, we need to be transparent with kids. There are no playoffs. The fans are gonna be limited and I will enforce that because we will lose our schedule. I will get creative to try to get people in there. Don't, don't misquote me on that, please. But if we don't enforce what the Mountain Valley Conference has said, it's been very clear that we will lose our schedule and people to play. You could say very quickly, if you want to, that we can try to find other opponents. That's, that's, that's a good point, but it's not a reality because people are also in the same boat. Regardless if you play in the Mountain Valley Conference or not, or Central Maine teams, you're gonna be in a position where we put our kids in a yo-yo again. I don't think that's good for mental health. That's my opinion and I'll, I'll leave that at that because right now I'm just trying to do my job. The reality is, if we don't make a decision tonight to go forward or back, we're putting those kids in the yo-yo. If we make a position to go forward, we're in the yo-yo. The only thing we know is that if we don't do something for these kids, whether it's playing against other teams or intramurals, that we're, we're at a dead road, dead end road. What Josh just said means a lot to me because I didn't know any of that information until I heard some of those kids speak tonight. You have athletes telling you that athletics are not as important. If we move forward with this, we're saying athletics are more important than academics. That is, no matter how you split that or what side you stand on, that is exactly what the message is that we're sending as a community after years we've been saying academics first. That's not an opinion, that's a fact. But the bottom line again for me is no matter where you stand on either side of this issue, this does not pass the straight face test. Your staff does not support this. Most do not support this. Because what we're asked to do all day with these kids is, it's tough. You've heard it from everybody. As much as we put a smile face on tonight, it is tough. But at the end of the day, if we move forward with sports, you're saying that everything that's done during the day does not matter. And you can say that's not your opinion and that's fine, but the reality is, is that you're taking kids, you're sponsoring events as a school and you're putting kids in the most unsafe environment as a school. Whether you, whether you say you like that or not, that is exactly what we're doing. And in, from an administrative point of view, I have an issue with that, not because of my opinion, but because it's my job when those kids are with me that I keep them safe. I am liable for that. That is, that is my job to make sure those guidelines are followed and it also makes sure that we're doing what's right for kids. And that those two areas conflict. So as much as I may have an opinion or not, those to me are the facts. So that's my statement.
People have questions for Mr. Stoneton. School board members have questions for Mr. Stoneton.
I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but I just, I think we're all struggling with this, number one. And Joel, I know you've been working really hard and being pulled in every direction and everything else, but I just see a difference with part of this. And I don't know what the necessarily the answer is, but the fact that sports have been being played all summer long, all over the state, and there have been no outbreaks. And I just don't know why that hasn't come out more as a positive thing. Also, you know, you say that we're asking when to remove their masks when they come on school grounds. I don't feel like that if we go through with this, that's not what we're asking. You know, we can make those regulations when kids are inside in schools, yes, they need to be masked, there's the regulations. When they're outside, there's, that's a difference. It's a different environment. So I just, I mean, I kind of question that, just that point, counterpoint with the whole mask wearing. And if, if, whether or not we, if we have fans or not, I know that's a whole other issue. You know, that's a whole other road we need to go down to as well if we move forward with that. So I just, I don't know, I just questioned some of those things or wanted to make some of those points.
Sure. And Jen, all I'm trying to simply say about the mask thing is, is that the long term that you guys voted in states very clearly that you're not supposed to wear a mask in, in school or on school grounds. You know, and we did review that and Sue was there, she was, she knows that we had that conversation. And yes, it is different, but I will tell you this, in, in, again, being very neutral here, sitting at the table with these groups, what they're telling us is that, yeah, things happened all summer, but now you have school kids that are involved. In our school system, we have thirty-nine kids that are saying, I'd like to not be involved with that because you're involving other cohorts that you're saying can't even enter my building during the school day. So that's, that's where I, and I'm strictly looking at policy on that. That is not my opinion.
Can I say something?
Ms. Bells.
In regards to the long form. Well, the last change that we made, that I think we're gonna vote on later today had to do with actually giving more mask breaks at five, I think it's five minutes in the classroom if they're distant and everything. So that was actually kind of putting something back in to that long form. Actually lessened it a little bit. And I did notice on the D O E that they did have an exception to mask wearing when you are playing sports on a field. If you're actively engaged, that is right in the D O E regulations dated, I believe it's nine nine twenty twenty. So you know, if we need to make that change to the long form because the D O E is recognizing that, I don't have a problem with that.
And I think so, that's part of the confusion is that you have the same groups sending you opposite messages.
Yep.
Well, I suspect, Joel, that when the long form was created, the confusion is, when the long form was created, was it created just for the school day? Or was it created for all activities that the school system sponsors? And because it clearly didn't include any other activities after school. At least I think it clearly. Am I correct when I say that?
I think you're right, yeah. I just, you know, and as we all know, I think part of the problem with this is that we didn't have this discussion over the summer because we didn't have the information. You know, so I think that's, that's part of the issue here is that we're not only up against a time crunch. The kids are feeling it, they see it. You know, there is, I did have an unexpected meeting today with some coaches that are not feeling it and have had seniors come to them saying that they're not interested in continuing regardless of how we go. And that surprised me quite a bit too. So like I said, I, I really do feel quite neutral about this because I'm on either side of the fence with it because I think both points exist. I'd be curious to hear what other folks have to say about it.
I was wondering, because you brought it up, Joel, about our staff. I was wondering if, if either one of the co-presidents for the M E A would like to speak for the staff? Have any of their staff members spoken to them? Do you have an idea about how our staff is feeling? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ms. Fitzgerald. I don't know if you feel prepared or want to do that. But would you like to represent the staff? Thoughts?
Sure. Absolutely. We've had many, many staff members come to us concerned about their safety from, from day one. From the beginning of this, they've been concerned about their safety. And Joel and the administrators all talked about how hard this year has been being in person and the toll it takes mentally and physically, but we're doing it and doing it the very best we can. And people feel like, you know, to have kids go out at the end of the day and play these contact sports, especially with kids in other town. especially with kids in other towns. Why? What are we killing ourselves for here? Why are we going through half of a container of Clorox wipes in two days? Disinfecting when this is what is going to be happening? So they've been coming to us very steadily and often and vehemently about their feelings about this. The staff is not in favor of sports. They totally understand the need for it. They get the mental health, but we have to watch out for the mental health of the staff as well. So that's kind of where we are. Not sure if Marcia wants to add more to that.
Marcia with us this evening?
She is.
Marcia, would you like to add anything?
I would also, I would also add one thing that keeps coming up from P E teachers is the fact that to teach P E, the kids have to be 14 feet apart outside and they don't understand why they have to stay that distance and yet sports can be, don't have to respect that distance. It's again, very confusing guidelines for everything.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bells?
I was just wondering Teresa, if you've heard from the teachers that are also coaches?
I have heard a couple of things. I've heard some teachers who are coaches have decided not to coach. I have heard teachers who are coaches being unduly pressured by parents when the coaches are expressing some fear and hesitation about whether they should coach or not and being put on the spot by parents about doing that, about having those thoughts, having that hesitation. That's what I've been hearing.
I'm speaking specifically for high school. I'm not including middle school. You, you mean high school? Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. There are no more questions for Ms. Fitzgerald or Mr. Stoneton. I'll ask Superintendent Hodgkins to weigh in. Looks good. Mr. Superintendent Hodgkin.
Okay, I pretty much have bit my tongue off trying to stay quiet.
I've noticed that.
Yeah, it's been really hard. And I'm sitting here thinking, if I'm in the community, I'm thinking, where's the superintendent in this conversation? And I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm anxious to weigh in. First of all, I just have to say that Mr. Stones and I are, have spent way too much time together talking about this and dealing with this issue. And, and I want to just, before I talk about my specific feelings about this, I just want to say really frustrated with a lack of objectivity. There's a lot of people, people are very passionate, understandably very passionate. And, and there's a real lack of, of respect. I'm sensing a real lot of respect from people who don't necessarily agree with whatever position. I'm, I'm astounded when people make some comments about our athletic director who is probably, I haven't just got to know Joel this year, but you know, the, the strongest advocate for athletics and, and competition and, and the value of education. Joel and I have talked about this a lot, the value it was for him as a, as a student athlete, the value it was for me as a student athlete. That anybody would think that either one of us would be anti-sports is, is, is very hard to imagine and understand and, and quite frustrating. Now that anybody would think this would be a political ploy, I think is, is ridiculous. It's just, it makes no sense. For me, the fact that we are here having this conversation is, is exceptionally frustrating because that our, our, you know, people who are in leadership position in the state have left it to the communities. There is not a single community in the state of Maine that would not, but you know, given the choice would say they don't want to have their fall sports. Everybody wants them. They're, they're the centerpiece of, of Maine communities of, of everything. And then you have to balance that against you know, health and safety. I, I know what the numbers are. And I know how small that the, the situation is, but I would just say echo the same thing. Joel is stealing my lines, but you know, I'm the one who sort of initially said, if you look at it on its face, it doesn't pass the straight face test. You look at all the work that we've done to try to put our kids back in school and have it safe for them. And then to sort of disregard all those rules and let them go up there and participate in sports doesn't pass the, the straight face test. However, one of the things that, that you and I have spoken about Chair Hurst and Guyer, if I had to vote, I would vote in favor of this motion to allow the, the fall sports to continue because I think, this is where I think we disagree, that it's our job or your, my job as a superintendent. I don't live here in Winthrop. I don't have a real vote per se. I don't think it should be up to any individual to make these decisions. And I do think as a representative body that your, your job is to take a look at what, where the community stands. And Josh is data is, is very compelling and makes me think a lot, but it's, it's, you know, I, I just hate to think about, I, I really love hearing the kids say whatever is decided, you know, I, I will live with that and I'll understand it. I guess my point, it's a long winded, winded way to say, there are two very, very, I don't want to call them valid, two really strong sides to this. And, and the lack of appreciation of the difficulty of the decision that the school committee is being asked to make is, is somewhat lost. And I think people think that if you are, if you vote not to have fall sports, you don't care about the kids. And then the equal number of people think if you vote for fall sports, you don't care about the kids. It's untenable and, and it makes, it makes, you know, virtually no sense. From my perspective, I'm taking this, the position of, and I said this before, if our state leaders, the MPA, the Department of Education, the main school management, the Department of Health and Human Services, if they put all these guidelines in place that say, go ahead, and they say no volleyball and no football for the fall, but everything else can go ahead with all these restrictions. If they say go ahead, I don't know how we say anything except we'll go ahead. And, and now we're charged with making it as safe as possible. You know, that we may or may not have coaches to, to put these sports on, that we may or may not have any competition to play against if we decide to go ahead with soccer and field hockey and cross country. You know, those things are, those things are are really important to think about. Joel and I spent a lot of time and, and I was asked by the school committee leadership put together a memo, Joel, and I talked about it. Joel wrote it, did an outstanding job of presenting the facts around this, all the other considerations, transportation's a consideration, spectator availability. You know, all those things that are in that memo are, are part of it. But at the end of the day, for me, it still comes down to if all of those powers to be that really govern state issues says that we should, we should do this and we should do it, we should do it. And, and you know, I don't mind sharing that when we were looking at our pre-board meeting and, and framing this question for the agenda, it initially started with canceling fall sports, but the decision by that, that collective group to move in this direction completely changed the motion and, and ended up where we are right now. I will say that I, I'm glad it's two different motions because I don't know how we have a middle school sports program because it's, you know, as of right now, we have only one coach that has committed to coming back and that's not, that's a football coach. So we have zero coaches that have said they would come back to, to do middle school sports at this point.
Thank you Superintendent Hodgkins. Any school committee people have any questions for the superintendent?
Well, just a question about middle school sports. Is that just in-house or is that advertised out of house since people now know? So, and I agree middle, I know that we, we might, it's a whole separate issue, but I just wonder how far that is out for coaches for middle school.
I, I think you might have a few coaches that possibly might have a discussion of, of returning to do something, but I, I think they're going well where they're at and I'm not sure they would leave that. But at the same time, it's, it's, I think the frustration of, of not giving them an answer has, has, you know, pushed them down a path of, of with the YMCA, which is going well for them and it's up and running. In a minute, because I have some information that will certainly affect your decision on that too.
Ms. Luskey has, she's been having internet problems. So she did write a comment here and I'll go ahead and and allow that. Sorry, I stepped away from, for a couple of minutes and my internet connection is spotty tonight. I completely agree with Teresa, Ms. Fitzgerald's statements and the concerns that we have heard from staff members and all the safety protocols and have put in place for students and staff in order to return to school and stay in person as long as possible. Any of the back to school committee people want to weigh in at this point?
Well, now that you said it like that, you know me.
Good evening, Dr. McConnell.
I just want to, I do want to just answer a couple, clarify a couple of things. I think from a slightly scientific medical perspective, there was the question of kids were out playing this summer and we didn't see cases increase. Well, cases were lower in general. And now what we're starting to see, and you've seen this coming across the country, that as people have gone inside and now as the weather's getting cooler, you're going to see it coming down from north to south, that cases are just going to absolutely increase. We've also seen a loosening of some of the stuff that we were doing earlier on. You see people going to more appointments. You see meetings in person and of course schools and colleges. So I think that makes us much higher risk. We are definitely seeing a very large, a very quick increase here in Maine. All stemmed from one place that has then had amazing repercussions. So the concern is, you know, how all of a sudden, you know, there's a case up in Mexico school. There's two cases in St. Dom's. I mean, it's just, you know, kind of, you know, these little fires are starting and I'm concerned that it will just take one student. So that to me is one of the big differences about the summer sports. The second is that these kids then went home. They went home and they, or maybe they hung out with the same little cohort over the summer. But they didn't then come back into school and expose non-athletes or kids that were trying to stay very safe because they have family members that are very high risk. And I think that's a huge difference to what they're doing now and trying to come in to school and get an education. I was amazed at some of the stuff that Joshua talked about, that some of these students wrote, the no students and how they were able to identify that if given a choice, it's their education and that's what's going to support their mental health is being able to be in school. And let's think about all the younger grades that aren't doing athletics. They might be running around a little bit on a Saturday morning, but again, you know, playing soccer. But again, they're going to be then getting in the car with just their family most likely. And these are also going to be more likely children that they've played with off and on anyway, as opposed to Monmouth coming together with Winthrop or other schools, you know, coming in contact. And then, you know, lastly, I appreciate that the numbers are low and I'm really glad we live in Maine. But I can't undervalue how sick this virus makes some people, including young people, and how it devastates their lives. So yeah, our deaths aren't that high and our numbers aren't that high, but it's really ruining lives and putting people on hold for a variety of reasons. So I just want, you know, I just would implore the school committee, I, you know, I love sports. My kids played sports. It was important to them. I really do. But when I think about education, I think about kids in art, I think about kids just being able to get back into school, how important that is. And I really would hate to see us blow it because of, you know, four or five games that they can get in until we have to close down. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Shumway?
Dr. McConnell, I just have a quick question. And if you don't feel comfortable answering this, I know I'm putting you on the spot, then that's completely fine. But one of the thoughts that's gone through my head is I, I completely understand what you're saying about the summer that the students were playing together and then going home perhaps and not coming into the school building. I was always under the impression though, that all of the precautions that we're taking, that it's keeping everyone safe, that they're wearing masks, that they're keeping physical distance, they're washing hands, sanitizing. And so that if someone happened to be asymptomatic and come into school, that, that the chances of exposure and spread were so nominal. And so I guess that some of, some of what in, in taking up this, you know, this conversation and having to make a determination, that's just one of the things that, that I wonder about and, and that if we're taking all of these precautions, then is the risk really that great? I understand the idea of coming in contact with other communities and that's like, not what I'm talking about right now. I'm just talking about in our school buildings, all the things that we're doing essentially are to keep the virus from spreading if someone was to have it.
Sue Bells and myself and Joel and all, you know, all the wonderful people that we spent our summer together meeting and, and talking about this stuff because you're absolutely right. We know that there are going to be asymptomatic cases coming into our school. And that is exactly why we're doing absolutely everything we can. And so the, the struggle is, well, a couple of things. For example, let me give you an example. We saw again as Arizona, Utah, other places opened much earlier than us, Georgia. You were able to see how if one case sprung up, how it affected a school, whether they had good social distancing and masks. And that allowed us up here in the Northeast to be able to develop better opening plans because of their experience. Unfortunately, there's a similar thing happening now. Like in Alaska, there were positive cases. I believe it was in football, but I might be wrong. And that began a spread through schools, a couple of different schools, and then it ended up affecting these schools to have to go to a red plan and go fully remote. And so again, we're able to follow some of their experiences. I don't have all the details, but that we definitely have seen that trend. But you're right. That's why, you know, we're not kidnapping children and keeping them in school and away from their adults because hopefully we're keeping them as safe as we can. And we can't keep kids from not necessarily going to church or out to eat or, you know, socially. We can't control all of that. But I just feel like when you look at the data, when you look at, I mean, why, why is the NBA, why do they kick somebody off a team because they came, they had a friend come in that wasn't part of the bubble? Because it's so important because when you're out there playing and doing these sports, you know, respiratory particles are spewing forth. So I don't know if that answers it, but we have seen the data. We've changed some of what we would have done in a reopening plan from June to September 1st because of what we saw in other parts of the country. And I think we can see it with this as well.
Any other questions for Dr. McConnell from the school committee?
Mine's not necessarily for Dr. McConnell.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bell.
I just kind of wanted to point out that regardless of whether or not we have sports, we still have to go through all those protocols at school, and they didn't add any extra protocols for people who do do sports while they're at school, correct?
Are at school?
What's that?
I don't, I didn't understand your question.
My question is, say, say we don't have sports, the protocols and procedures that have to happen in our schools still have to happen, but if we have sports, they're still going to remain the same, there's no extra protocols or anything that's required because we have sports, correct?
During the day, yes, but for, as you know, there's many guidelines to put a, put a game in place.
Right.
But you're talking about the school day, I believe.
Right. My point being that there's no difference with what goes on during the school day, whether or not there's sports.
Are you suggesting, Ms. Bells, that we're, we're creating a very safe atmosphere during the day so that we can have sports?
Yes, and I'm also, I am saying that, and I'm saying that obviously, the governor's office and the Department of Education agrees with that, or else they would have put extra things in place that you have to do during the school day if you have sports. I'm just making a point that they didn't, so they must think, I'm kind of concurring with what Superintendent Hodgkin said, that from, we've always gone by what the Department of Education has said, and we've always gone by what the governor's office has said, and they are on board with fall sports if you follow those protocols.
What would be additional things that we might require our athletes during the day?
That's the point that I'm making, there wasn't any.
My point is, I don't know what other things there are.
Exactly.
No, that's not making your point, I, I think.
There are none.
There are, there are no more, no other things that we have available to us. If, if we had more things available to us, it might be so, but I, I don't think that we have any more things available to us.
That's my point, that they, obviously, they felt like it was safe enough to allow sports, that's what I'm getting at.
My point didn't agree with your point, so I'm not expressing myself well, so, go ahead.
Jenny, I think that there is another level that would be higher, and it's not a level that has ever been brought up, as Sue is saying, is that we're not requiring, there has never been a suggestion that if a student plays a sport, that they need to be full remote. There's never been any indication of that, and that is, would be the next level, is that if, if it was unsafe for them to play sports and come into our school buildings. So I think that the, that, that is what Sue is saying, is that there is another option and that it's not a requirement, that's come through.
I've made that suggestion several times, not in public at a meeting, but I, I think that that's a viable option.
We actually, we actually put it into the bulletin for football, the second recommendation from the committee, because it came down from the governor, as a matter of fact, that they said that we should do that if we were going to. If you guys remember the letter I shared with you, it stated very clearly that they were not in support because colleges and so forth were putting them remotely. And then, then, in everybody's defense, they did a 180 the next week and said, and to your point, Sue, I would say that there would be more things put in place during the day if we didn't do what we were doing after school to play sports, which, whether it adds to your point or not, I'm really too confused at this point to know, but it's more of just, you know, if we don't put those things in place, they weren't going to do it. And again, sitting at that table, within 24 hours, it changed so quickly with all the regulations. So to your point, yes, I follow what you're saying, I'm just saying if we're not, if we do this, there's a whole other layer that we're going to have to put into place to make it work.
What would those be, Joel?
The guidelines I've handed to you. You know, you're going to have to have five sanitizing stations, one for each team, one for the fans, one for the officials, one for the substitution, all of the balls that get played out of bounds have to be sanitized before they're put back into play, anybody that's on the bench has to sit six feet away and be wearing a mask. The only normalcy to any of this is when the game is in play. And again, I just, you guys know I'm really firm about this, the kids need to understand that, that it's, it's completely different, it's an exhibition season, and that's it.
One thing about that, Joel, is that I felt like that the, like, the guidelines for soccer and field hockey were that the game was actually going to change. I don't know so much about field hockey because I don't understand that game anyways, but for soccer, that there were significant portions of the game that were going to have to be played differently. So for all of the students out there that are listening, and for parents out there, we're not, we're not saying that the programs that are being, that would be potentially put in place are going to be pre-COVID, you know, gameplay. I mean, there's, there's no one saying that that's what's happening, that there would be changes to it all, and it would be a huge, a huge task, and I won't go into my position yet, and my points yet, but I cover that elsewhere. So I didn't mean to interrupt you, Joel, I just felt like that I had read that there were changes to the game.
Yes, you are absolutely correct, and I just think, Kristen, I think we're saying it in a different way, possibly, that for transparency, for, you know, students and parents, they need to understand that it is much different, and that's okay, that's totally okay, I just, I've got to be honest with you, in the last couple of days, when people are starting to hear, well, you know, there's issues with fans, there's issues of how, you know, some people feel that the game is going to be played, the flow of the game is going to be disrupted and so forth, and that's totally okay, as long as people, I just don't want a kid to show up and be like, well, this is nothing like I thought, you know, just because, not because that's how life is, but because they have been so jerked around to this point, and that's a big fear of mine if we move forward to get hopes up again. Because for field hockey folks, the original schedule had Dirigo as our number one game, so we would be having a much different conversation right now had that schedule gone through. I think Josh has a question.
Josh, and then Ms. Bells.
Yeah, sorry, along the lines of that, I have been talking to a lot of my student athletes' friends, because I myself am a fall sport athlete, which is kind of really, like, which is why it made this, like, coming out and telling my opinion really hard, because, I don't know, because you have so many people to maybe disappoint, your teammates, your coaches. I think a lot of kids, and kids that I've talked to, and to keep the anonymity of it, have come up to me honestly and said, like, hey, if we have sports, like, it's, like, I don't think it's a good idea, but I think I'll play, you know, and I think it's because, I think as ramblers and well-raised students, we don't want to disrespect authority, and these coaches who have helped us since we were like freshmen, or from lower grades, who have helped us build up, who we've had a bond with, like, as a team, like, that's part of the reason I have, like, such a hard time with this. I think though, you'll find that there'll be kids who, like, won't speak up or won't quit their fall sport because of that aspect, that we have kids who respect their coaches and respect their teammates, and it's that social factor, that social pressure, it's really hard on kids. And I'd also like to point out that I have talked to some kids, and they have told me that, I don't know, like, what's the, like, some of them have been like, what's the point of playing Monmouth or Gardner twice and then maybe catching a case? I think we're going into this with a mentality that, like, yeah, we're going to get shut down at some point, so why does it matter? But I think we should try to stretch out, and I'm here to advocate for the students who don't have, like, a sport to play, what about their mental health? Like, if we get shut down early because of a case, and again, it's that what-if, like, what's going to be their mental health look like? Like, I want to advocate for all students, like, as a student rep, I don't just represent the high school, which I honestly feel bad, because I honestly have been focusing on high school more, but, like, again, the little kids, the middle schoolers, if they're, like, what if they don't have sports? And the grade schoolers definitely don't have sports, they're not at fault, like, that comment that said, like, if we get shut down because of a case, like, they're not at fault. But I was recently conversing with a teacher, or not a teacher, with an administrator, and they had told me a personal story of how their niece was, had become, like, depressed because they didn't have that social, like, factor in their life, and like, I get it, it goes both ways, which is why we have such a hard time with this, with student athletes and what their mental health will look like. But I think, like, there's a lot of kids who don't play a sport, and that if they get shut down, they kind of lose that aspect, like, that social aspect, and I just think we should take that into consideration. I have talked to some of my student athletes, and they, they tell me, like, oh, we have to wear, like, masks during this, like, that's not great, like, what, the, and I've also talked to, like, a lot of, actually, I've talked to all the captains, and they have all told me different things, and again, the, and then, shoot, sorry.
Anonymity.
Anonymity. I've had such a trouble, hard time remembering that word. Like, I'm not going to say, like, what their point of view was, but their captains and their leaders, and they know, like, that sometimes it's just like, we can't go through with this, you know, I think it's really hard, but I just, I ask you guys to think about the students who are not at fault, if we get, like, it could happen anywhere, but we're trying to educate students right now, like, it could happen, maybe they could catch a case from work, but they're working, they're not, it's not like they're, like the wedding that happened, like, that's not like they were trying to teach people something there, that was a celebration, like, stuff can happen, but I just think it'll be something really big on our conscience if we somehow get shut down because another school that we played had a case, like, I just, I don't know, this is some of my thoughts on this subject.
Thank you, Josh.
Other comments? I'll take this opportunity, then, to weigh in a little bit. I had been an advocate from, from the get-go of, if we do have sports, then all of our students that are involved in sports should be mandatory remote students, and if we did that, I would be fine with offering sports. However, that really doesn't seem to be part of our discussion. I think that we've had a lot of people work very hard to keep our students safe, to keep our staff safe, and in a way, then, to keep our community safe. We've heard from our community that it was very important for their children to go to school, that allows them to go to work, so that they know that their children are safe at school, and if something happened to that and we'd have to close down school, we'd have a lot of parents not able to do that. I think that that would be letting down, where many of us think that not having sports would be letting down our community, I think having a situation where we have to go red would be letting down our community as well. Our whole nation has spent a great deal of money trying to make our schools safe, and hopefully, it will be for as long a period of time as possible. I think allowing sports to, to go forward would be, in a way, almost purposefully admitting that we're going to shut down, and what difference does it make whether we go red a couple of weeks earlier than we'd probably go red anyway? And again, I, I agree with Josh and have thought of it independently, we have a whole bunch of students that are not involved in sports that, that we're responsible for considering as well, and, and their, and their education. We, I think that we all agree that in-person education is far better than remote, as hard as we try to make remote viable, that in-person education is, is going to always be better than remote, and because of that, I will be voting against this motion, because of all those things, I'll be voting against this motion. I think it makes very little sense to me that we go to so much trouble to keep our students and staff safe during the day, and then turn around and allow them to do things that don't stand up to our standards, our daytime standards after school. Thank you. Other folks?
There's some stuff in the chat, too, Jenny, I don't know if you want to get to that.
I'm not allowing any community chat. Mr. Petrowski?
I'm assuming that by defeating this motion, we basically defeated all sports at one time, and so we're not making any exception for any of the sports here.
I think that we make additional motions, you know, that's always a possibility, we don't have to stick to the, just, the two motions that are in our agenda that would, that would amend this motion, or you have the opportunity to amend a motion.
Well, I'm looking at golf, for instance, pretty good success story in people continuing to play golf, certainly are ways to take and make it as safe as you possibly can without, perhaps, some of the major assignments that you'd have to do. I mean, I can't speak for cross-country, but I'm interested in that, nor can I, you know, I know soccer, I think soccer does have some ingredients where it would be, I can't imagine playing it without having close contact, and the same thing is true in football, especially in view of the article that was in the Lewiston Sun Journal today, talking about how so many of the teams are going to basically flag football, seven-on-seven type of program. So that's one of my concerns, I'm not sure I want to take and just simply say no to everything, even though it's consistent with what the policy is in terms of the school, or, that's my problem. I'll, I'll listen to more.
Yep, I want to listen to more, but I think that there's always the option of offering an amendment. Mr. Superintendent?
So I want to, I want to sort of build on that, and it isn't specifically about the seven-on-seven, I got Joe's, I got your information that you sent, but for me, in addition to what I said before, and first of all, I just have to say Josh has made some very compelling statements, which is, which is, you know, making me think a little bit, and I, I have to say that I'm, that I don't know that there, outside of the school committee, that there are people who are listening who are, who are necessarily looking to hear something that's going to change their thinking. I think people, for the most part, with the exception of the school committee, weighing in sort of to, to make their case, and so, where was I going with? Oh, so my, my point in terms of follow-up to what Joe said is, I, I've heard a lot of people say, and I, and totally agree with what Dr. McConnell said with respect to what happened this summer, the kids would go home to, to their families and stuff, and she's, as far as I'm concerned, she's spot on. The issue for me, in hoping that we would do this, would have to be with some provisos, I, I think there's a pretty good chance that we could have the fall sports that are being, that being permitted to have and not have any competitions. And for me, that would at least still provide some skill development, some opportunity to be with peers, their, their own cohort, to, to, to do some things within those groups, and then they go back to the, to school with the same people. I'm, I'm mostly concerned, and I would, I would really weigh in that we'd limit the number of exposures to other cohorts as much as possible, regardless of what we do. A lot of, lot of skill development, a lot of opportunities, I think to the extent that we can structure, what are I think to the extent that we can structure what our students are doing somewhat, a little tiny bit after school, you know, somebody said earlier, we're not gonna control that, who they go to dinner with. We're not gonna control where they go after practices, or, or any of those types of things. But to the extent that we can structure some of their day, give them some opportunities to, to have some, some sort of physical activity, I think we oughta, we oughta try to do that. Um, and then to speak directly to Joe's point, I think if we, if we vote on this, I think we should, we should also include that that means that our, our football coaches, who, who might want to continue to, have kids, if they chose to, I mean, Joel and I haven't really specifically spoken about this, but, you know, if they wanted to have them continue to come and, and work on, on things that they know they're not gonna get to use, perhaps in the spring, which, that's a different issue that I don't wanna talk about tonight. You know, that, that they, but they still at least get to have the, the social aspect of being in school. And while I still think it's, it's creating some, some more risk or exposure than we would have if we say no to all of this, it still allows us to have some level of control and some activity for our, our student athletes.
I, I think what you're suggesting, Mr. Superintendent, would be a different motion. Maybe you have. No? Okay.
I guess I'll weigh in if no one else is going to at this point. So first, I just wanna start off and just say, in general, that this is an absolute lose-lose situation for every single person involved in this. I don't think it's fair to say that supporting sports is, is saying that we don't, that we're not supporting teachers and staff and administrators. And I think that that's unfair to say that, because that is not the case in, in my personal situation at all. So it's, it's just a lousy situation that we're all be, being put in, and I think that we're all coming at this very honestly. And I know that there are more than one of us that are on the screen right now that have lost hours and hours of sleep over this, among other things, throughout this entire year, summer, et cetera. So none of what I'm saying is being said lightly or out of disrespect to anybody or anybody else's point of view. But for me, I look at the facts and I look at data. And as Mr. Stoneton, as you sent data to us at the school committee as we're trying to make this decision, I'm, I'm faced with a couple things. First off, all of the regulations, which set up a somewhat safer environment for our student athletes to be able to participate in. Second, if we're looking at the decision that the MVC made very early on, saying that if you're an MVC team, that you play other, in, in that conference, that you only play teams that are in that conference. So that, what came, that came out long before this. And then the second point being that the, um, that in the regulations, that if you are in, in our situation, Kennebec County, and you can only play other counties that are surrounding you. So when I take that information, and I look at that information, I look at Kennebec County and taking the latest data from the CDC, that Kennebec County has a hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and two residents. Overall total cases, two hundred total cases in our county, twenty-three in the last fourteen days. So the amount of, the rate of infection is, is so miniscule. We're talking about to the ten-thousandth place of rate of infection. And then you look at the other counties of the schools that the MVC is part of. You look at Lincoln County, Andrew Scoggan, Franklin, and Somerset. Andrew Scoggan has the most. They have a hundred and eight thousand residents, roughly. They've had a total of six hundred and fifty-six cases, forty-six in the last fourteen days. So their rate is much higher than ours. So we could make a decision that we don't play teams in that, in that county because their rate is higher. So that would be, take out Oak Hill, take out Lisbon. But then you look at Lincoln. They have thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four in their, in their county. Thirty-nine total cases, one in the last fourteen days. You look at Franklin, fifty-three total cases, two in the last fourteen days. They have thirty thousand residents. Somerset, eighty-five total cases, twenty-two in the last fourteen days. They have fifty thousand. So when we're talking about risk, there is risk in absolutely everything that we do. And I just feel like that by making this decision of taking this away for our students is, the risk is not great enough, in my opinion, to completely take it away, knowing that we are asking for masks to be worn at all times other than a very small time period. There's going to be all of this sanitation that never happens. I mean, if you've ever watched a sporting event, the amount of times that that mouthguard comes in and out of the mouth, and things are touched, and high fives and whatnot, and we've never had a team that has, that has been an outbreak of anything. And, I mean, I just feel like that, looking at the data, that it's so low, that the, the risk is so nominal, that to be making such a major change for such a nominal risk, to me, is, calls that into question. I am not gonna sit here and fight for something, though, if the students don't want it. So if the students really, truly don't want this, then, you know, I'm not, I'm gonna stop agonizing over it. But for me, just looking at the data, the data isn't compelling enough for me to say that I'm putting our students and our staff at risk. The other point is, is that these are events that are outside. All of our school day, you're inside in a contained area. And everything that's being, um, that's shown is that events that are outside, that the, the risk of contraction has been so much lower. And then, um, the, one of my other points is, is that I'm a big control freak. I like to manage anything that I'm involved in. And for me, I trust our coaches and our administrators to run a program that is going to be safe for our students. By not having a program, doesn't mean that our students are not going to be involved. Doesn't mean that our students aren't going to be participating in something else outside of school. It means that they're going to be doing it in a way that I can't control it, that I can't say are safe. And even by passing off our middle school sports to the YMCA, there's a level there of, I don't know masks, if masks are being worn at every moment. I don't know, you know, what the hand sanitation protocols are for all of that. So it doesn't make me feel comfortable to push something off onto another program that I don't know anything about. All it's doing is just pushing off the liability of the school district. But it's not saying that our students are any safer by doing those outside events. Any mo, and, and I feel truly and honestly that if we offer something through our school, that they will be safer if we offer the program and we can control it in that way. And I'm not naive. I see all over Facebook, all of our students participating in outside programs outside of our town. So they are already participating in programs with students from other schools. They are already participating in programs with students from other counties, perhaps. And so do we want more of our students to be seeking those opportunities out because their time isn't fulfilled by a safe activity at school? To me, that risk is not worth it. And that's, that's all that I have to say at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Shumway. Ms. Bells?
Um, I totally agree with everything Kristen just said, and, and I just wanted to comment on the part about when she mentioned if the, if the students don't want it, you know, she doesn't wanna stand in their way, but it would be nice if they had that choice. So that, so that, that we're not make, necessarily making that choice, they get to make that choice. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bells. Mr. Deanda Whalley?
Sorry, um, yeah, I, I totally understand and can see the views from that side. But I'd also like to point out, the kids who took their time to write down the quotes of why they think they should, why they think that sports shouldn't happen. A lot of these kids are community leaders, a lot of them were team captains. A lot of them, they know, like, the risks that are involved. No matter what the numbers say, they know that cases will grow, that anything could happen. I think, we, yes, we can't control what kids do outside, and like, maybe we feel safer if we can control. But I think that if we're putting them face-to-face for, I don't know, what, twenty, like, you, like, it's a smaller amount of time, we're still putting them face-to-face. They're still huffing and puffing on each other's faces. Like, the risks, like, may be lower in the numbers, but they're gonna grow. And I guess it's about, are we gonna support something that, like, maybe could cause a case? Again, like, maybe kids will find different areas or different places to find these sports and go to different clubs. But I feel like that'll be like a smaller amount of students. And, and I just, for the heck of it, I just think that, I think we could control, like, a little bit of how, what students, like, oh, sorry. I lost my train of thought. I just, I just, I don't know. I feel like our staff is working way too hard for this to, like, what's the point of sanitizing and doing all these things, like, in a classroom? I just, I know some teachers that haven't really, don't feel like they can't go to the bathroom because they're sanitizing everything all the time. They're having to, like, yeah, it's ten minutes, like, this is for the high school, ten minutes, and it has been stretched out, ten minutes between classes. But I, but by the time they're sanitizing everything, letting the kids out, letting them back in, giving them hand sanitizer, like, I, like, I've had some teachers, like, say in class, like, hey, I, I just, I feel like I can't drink water because then I can't go to the bathroom, because it's just like, I have no time, right? Like, I just feel like we're not paying enough attention to the staff and what they have to say. I feel like they're a big part of this, like, students, yeah, maybe it'll affect their mental health. But I feel like staff also has a say in this, and I feel like enough staff have spoken up about how this. And I guess there's always, uh, that, I guess, there's always the choice of not playing a sport or not doing this, or choosing not to participate, but then what does that do? I don't know. I just, I feel like there's enough kids who really decided, who are really well-educated and well-spoken, and gave really great views and reasons why we shouldn't have them. And then we have people on the other side who are just saying, leaving one-word answers, football. Why is this even a question? Why does this happen? One of them was, I don't care what Mills says, we should just do it. I want football. Like, I just, I don't see, I guess, this is where we come to the point where we don't agree. I just feel like for the safety of most of the students and their, like, mental health, I just, I think we have a lot of students who maybe didn't speak up, and I just think it'll benefit the students if we don't go with sports.
Thank you, Mr. Deanda Whalley. Anybody else? Seeing nobody, we'll call the vote. So the motion is to move forward. Mr. Petrowski?
Joe, you're muted.
Mr. Petrowski? Need to unmute.
That means I can change my mind without anybody hearing me.
I didn't read your left, so, yeah, you could.
So I guess no one really thought it would be a good idea to pursue, uh, moving forward with some sports and not with others?
Plenty of time for an amendment to be offered, so. Now I'm calling for the vote.
Okay, I'll, I'll vote yes. I'll go forward.
Vote yes. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Geyer, no. Motion passes four to one. Thank you, everybody. I know it's tough. Joel, do you have any questions about the thoughts of the school committee?
No, um, Mr. Hotchkins and I are gonna have to have a conversation about finances tomorrow.
Okay.
Ginny, can I just?
That's a true story.
Joel, I meant to bring this up before, and, um, and I didn't bring it up. But, um, I just feel like that there are a lot of parents and a lot of booster members that, the boosters kinda aren't really doing anything right now, just because of the situation. Yeah, that, that they would, um, there would be a large contingency of people that would be willing to help tackle this list, especially on, um, you know, days, if you need volunteers and so on and so forth. So I would just encourage you to, um, to reach out and get that support to help you, because this is, and, and this I didn't say either, this is a huge task to pull this off. But you're not alone in that. And I don't want you to think that the school committee feels like, oh, yeah, you just go figure it out. So, um, so, and I meant to say that earlier, so I apologize for being out of.
Honestly, after I sent you guys that email this morning around four o'clock, I, I had drafted a letter to Mr. Hotchkins for his approval to send out to parents. Um, that's why I was really wishing that everybody would let the vetted process happen before we started attacking everybody, um, that would allow me to create jobs to get parents of players there. So that is my intent, and just was waiting to see how things happen tonight.
Mr.
On the same page.
Mr. Stone, in, uh, sort of the same general area, but, um, but different from the motion.
Like that.
Um, I just, I just have a couple of thoughts, and I, I don't need, you know, anybody's opinion, but I, I just want to encourage you to do whatever you can. I, I think that, um, I, as Kristen said, it's been terrible for everybody to be put into this situation. But I see a little bit of a repeat of the situation from spring to fall. Yeah, MPA waited, said, let's wait another two weeks, let's wait another two weeks. Maybe we can even have the end of the season carry over into the summer. And then finally, nope, we're not gonna have a season. Then, and then, um, you know, you know, they've, they've worked so hard to allow for a, a season in the fall, and we keep on waiting and going backwards. And then the governor doesn't agree, and a huge, uh, uh, group of associations get together to finally put out the rules that we have. Excuse me. I would just encourage you to encourage the powers that be to be thinking well ahead for the winter athletic season so that there's less of this, uh, less of this situation, so.
Understood. Had that conversation yesterday with the.
Thank you. Um, as far as the, um, the recommendation from the MPA that we could put off tackle football to the spring, one of the things that really concerns me for Winthrop, as well as all the other small schools in the state, is that we've, uh, we've already canceled spring sports once. And for a small school to, um, to, to put together a football team and all the spring sports seems to be, um, quite, quite difficult, so.
Lot of things have to happen if, and, you know, in short, this, it's what's called the New York form. If we move forward, it, I'll, I'll try to do this quickly. January first is the next time that they're gonna review regulations to allow indoor activities, which is when basketball happens. That doesn't look great, uh, but if they, if. That doesn't look great, but if they, if they don't start in November and have to push basketball, excuse me, basketball to January 1st, they'll do a condensed season for that, at which time they will open up a fall season afterwards, and they will push spring sports back into the summer more. So if you are on a baseball team, for example, you could be playing for a state championship through the MPA at the end of July. All of those things have to line up. And again, being part of the football committee, when we made this recommendation, we just didn't want to cancel it. We wanted to postpone it. And again, if you guys think you're making hard decisions now, it's coming again.
I think it's unfortunate, like the superintendent said, that every school board in every town is being pushed into these decisions, and it's between, it's putting school committees between a rock and a hard place. I would encourage the governor's office to make, to help, to make that decision for us.
Yeah, I just sent you my letter that I'm gonna send to the folks, and you'll see at the end that people's time would be much better used instead of attacking us and my colleagues to talk to the legislature that are making these, these rules. I would like to take 30 seconds, and then I think we take a break at nine. Is that right?
Um, yeah.
I just want to make you aware, just, I think Kristen and I are on the same page. These are the teams that we will have available to play. Haldale and Monmouth, Booth Bay, Wiscasset with cross country only, Richmond with soccer only, Mount Abram with soccer and cross country, Carabakh with soccer only until October 8th, and Madison with cross country and girls' soccer only. Madison, Mount Abram, Monmouth, and Haldale, which form one co-op in golf, and ourselves will have golf. We are not allowed to play the teams of Dirigo, Mountain Valley, Telstar, Buckfield. And just because this goes outside our conference, if, if we're looking for, St. Don's is obviously an out. And Mount Blue closed last night, their sports. So what does any of that mean? It means we're in a good place because we're in Kennebec County, but some of these school boards decided not to play even adjacent, such as Dirigo, Mountain Valley, and Buckfield because they're RSHU 10, and their school board made that decision. I'm just gonna throw this at you because it's gonna be coming your way. Monmouth, Haldale, Richmond, Madison, Carabakh, Telstar, Mountain Valley, and Dirigo school boards are all acknowledging the Mountain Valley Conference fan regulations. That's not to put pressure on you. I just know that you asked me earlier today, who's offering what for sports and so forth. That doesn't mean you do whatever you want to do with that. Just information.
No spectators. That's no spectators? That's what you're referring to?
Yeah, but again, I will get very creative to, and I want to state this publicly. I'm gonna take care of seeing your parents first. I'm gonna be talking to those people first if I need volunteers and jobs. I mean, you guys can shut me down anytime you want. I just think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Ms. Dykett?
We may want to check on Madison. I know that we were talking about if there are outbreaks in communities. I feel like Madison was one of the ones that just had four that were a reaction from that wedding, but don't quote me on that. And then.
The AD just called me, Jen, and I haven't answered it because you're probably on just.
And then the other thing, and I know that the regular, or the, the no fan thing just came out last night or yesterday, Joel. Is that correct, to all districts, that no fans?
I was voted on last week. It's just the papers, I guess the paper had a lull, so they needed to put something out, but it was.
Okay, but it's just sort of coming up. I just wonder, and I know just through social media that parents are outraged in Winthrop, and I know, I just wonder what the community reaction is in other communities, and if that would ever be changed. And I know that doesn't have anything to do necessarily with our committee right now, but, you know, with the fact that the no thing, I know that that has become a really big deal in Winthrop.
I shared with Mr. Hodgkin this morning that I had 23 emails from the conference by six o'clock this morning of their disapproval of me. Oh, sorry, Mr. Hodgkin, I didn't see it. No, I just want to weigh in, and I'm, again, sort of astounded, want to express my concern with the community's reaction to that, and this sort of implicit, or saying to us that we should just ignore what the guidelines that have been in place. I don't know which is a tougher, a tougher thing to administer. We're gonna, we're in, if they hadn't said no spectators in the MVC, we'd be dealing with the 100 limit, which is the number of total participants, including players, officials, coaches, everybody that needs to be there. And then, I don't know, whatever that takes up, if you say an average of 20 on, say, a soccer team, and coaches, or you're talking about just over 40, add the officials, you're probably talking like 45, and then we have to then figure out what 55 people we're going to let into the game. I think that's just, that, to me, is just, is crazy. So the people who think it's either Joel's decision or my decision, or some random decision, and listening, looking at some of the comments about some sense of randomness or not, it's just not that. And that's just people reacting emotionally, not with any sense of ration, you know, rational thinking that, you know, this is not, we're trying to figure a way to make it easier. You know, that's laughable because it's just, it's ridiculous how much time people here a great deal have spent dealing with this issue. And, and for people to suggest that we just overlook or disregard or close our eyes to the regulations that we're asked to operate under is, is, is crazy. We're gonna do the best, Joel's already said that we're gonna, we're gonna give priority to seniors, to senior parents. With any luck, this won't be in place, you know, next, next year we'll have a normal fall. And so if you're a junior, hopefully as you're senior, you don't have to deal with these issues. But for these, for these parents of seniors in particular, we want to make every single effort possible to get, you know, those parents, every opportunity to see their children in a, you know, just, for me, it's not even about the competitive sense or any of that type of stuff. It's just about this is their last chance to see their children participate, period. And so I don't care if it's, come watch them practice, come watch them scrimmage, come watch them play game. I don't care what it is. It's, it's that opportunity. So, you know, I just, it's really bothersome that, you know, that there's sort of this sense of, of just ignore that the MVC decision because quite frankly, that's a better decision than us having to say which 55 people we're gonna let into some particular contest.
Thank you. Ms. Bells?
I'm taking a timeout because I gotta pee.
I was, I was, Jenna just put it in the chat, but I was just gonna ask about, do we have the capability for a live stream?
No, we do not. It's being calibrated, believe it or not, to, to even use the camera that was purchased down at the football field. The whole field has to be lined to calibrate. We just had them installed last week. They said we're probably two to three weeks out. So I don't see it as a reality this fall. That doesn't mean it won't happen. And coaches have known that, been very transparent with them. You know, and I just wanna, you know, this came up in conversation today. You know, just want to be very clear that you guys approved these, and they were purchased through private funds of people doing fundraisers and so forth. So I don't, I don't want to have anybody coming back and saying that we're not doing things equally for people. It's, it's a matter of technical stuff right now. And the reason those cameras were put there is because they raised the money and the funds to do so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna call a time. I'll start with you, Ms. Shumway, in a minute, but I'm gonna call a time right now. It is 9:09, and we're gonna resume the meeting at 9:15. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. I cut you off in this, Shumway, if you would like to ask your question?
It wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was more, it was more of a comment that I wanted the majority of the people who were on the audience, that were in the audience, to understand that, and this is my point of view, obviously, but I fully support that if anyone is not following the regulations from coaches to athletes, to parents, to spectators, et cetera, that it'll get shut down. And I just want that to be very clear to everybody, that, that the people who are, who are enforcing the regulations, it's not whether they like them or not, it's that they, they have to be enforced. And so if these programs are going to run, it's going to be by following the guidelines. And they all have my full support to shut it down if people are not in compliance. So this is not a time to make a political stand about your views. It's that if these are the rules and the regulations that are required in order for our students to play in this atmosphere, then they need to be followed.
It sounds to me like it's that cooperation thing again as opposed to rebelliousness.
Yeah, exactly.
Before we go on, we do have a policy that states that our meetings will not go beyond nine o'clock. And unless we get the okay from folks, I would just like to take a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Are we, as a school committee, ready to continue? I see Jenna's a thumbs up. Ms. Bells?
I'm good.
You're good. And Ms. Shumway, Mr. Patraski's not back with us, but we have a consensus. So we will continue on. I'll entertain a motion to move forward. Yes, sir.
Can I just have a, can I respond to Mrs. Shumway's statement?
Yes, sure.
Here's a concern, and you saw it in the memo. The other day when the article came out, you saw Winthrop kids masked at a practice. The third picture into that roll had two Winthrop girls playing soccer unmasked and not even one around their face. As you continued on that, there was some other athletes and so forth. I don't care, per se, it's not my business to tell Monmouth how to do their things. We're gonna have to make a decision and have a very serious conversation about our co-ops because when you look at that, and you're welcome to, I'll go back and check it out in the newspaper and so forth. You'll see what I'm talking about. I think, and I'm not asking for a decision, I'm just saying, again, there's a list at the end of that memo of things that we are gonna have to deal with, and co-op is one of them. By moving forward with fall sports, you've also allowed football to be involved with seven-on-seven, which is three communities. That's, that's something to consider. That's all. So when we made this decision, as I outlined in that memo, there's more to it. as I outlined in that memo, there's more to it than just affecting winter kids. So I just, you know, I guess, you know, Kristen, I'm sorry, I'm not like trying to react to it, I guess, that's, or respond to your statement. It's more of, that's a very good point, but it also goes much deeper than just what we decide. And I think we need to be very transparent about that also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stoneton.
Yeah, I hope that makes sense.
Yep, good luck.
Well, as a matter of fact, we had a co-op with Oak Hill, and they, that would, that would give us an issue right now.
I'll entertain a motion to move forward with middle school fall sports and adopt the regulations that were set forth by the MDOE and the Joint Committee.
Second?
The move goes, the motion goes to Ms. Dykett, second by Ms. Shumway. I think it's pretty fitting, Mr. Stoneton, that you get first stab at it.
Well, I don't think there's any secret that we, we, I have two programs that are not gonna run at this time because I don't have coaches. We can advertise, but to be honest with you, I don't think that you'll get anything in time to save the season. Doesn't mean we don't have to. I'm just, I've been very upfront that we're out of time. We're already a month, almost a month and a half behind a regular start date. And the seasons would be ending in about three weeks. I do know from conversations with the soccer coaches that they would be interested in possibly doing something after school. However, I also know that there's only four schools in the area that we can play that are offering some sports. For example, Richmond again is offering soccer, but Marina Cook is canceled. Coney has canceled. I mean, just anything that's immediate is, is not available to us. Lisbon is, is offering their programs, but that's out of an area that we should be playing. They are adjacent, you're, you're welcome to make that decision, but if we're gonna, you know, try to follow some of the things that we set up above. Football is willing to just do their practices without pads. The recommendations from the MPA that we put out, there's no equipment, fully masked, everything that you would basically align with field hockey. So I think there are some things that you can do. I don't think it's realistic to have a conversation about developing a schedule for games. And that is nothing to do with my opinion, my political view, that's just telling you that there's just, it's, it's not gonna happen. You, you can tell me to go out and try, that's fine, I will. I will make some phone calls and CC on the emails if people need that. But I just don't see that there's a legitimate, the league is not functioning right now.
And I was remiss in saying before there was discussion by the school board to the public, if you wish to have any public comment about this particular motion to influence the school board's vote, please type it in, in the comment or the chat section right now. Ms. Bells?
Quick, quick question for you, Joel. I just wanted to clarify because I wasn't quite sure what you were meaning about when you mentioned Richmond. You saying that they could potentially play Richmond, but it wouldn't be like a formal schedule? What did you mean by that?
Well, I think everything we're doing this fall is exhibition, so it just means that if, if, for example, that you decided to move forward with middle school sports and some coaches were willing to do some things, you could certainly align some games.
Kind of like a scrimmage, more like a scrimmage mentality?
Yep, it's scrimmage or game. What we do have working against us that we don't at the high school level is that, you may or not have seen in the papers that the officials are down by 30% because of multiple issues. So to get somebody is gonna be very difficult, or to travel cross-country, like I know is not happening at all in the league anyways, just because all of the courses have to be six feet or wider, and it's just not something that can, that would happen, so.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wasn't quite following you, so I wanna make sure I had it in my brain right.
Yeah, yeah, and honestly, you know, a lot of this is because, you know, obviously at the, the high school level, there's more of these conversations that are preemptive. So when we're here, like, you know, tomorrow I'm meeting with the Mountain Valley Conference. I'll probably have a schedule by the end of that meeting for certain, for certain sports groups. That's not gonna happen, per se, at the middle school level. Again, you know, if we wanted to do something and have them do skills and drills, but you'll have to make that decision, I know you said the MP and the Joint Committee, but is, if that's the way you wanna go.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, I have a, a comment, which I sort of called for earlier, but they're coming in now. Could, this is from Grace, who said, could parents volunteer if a coach does not want to take part at the middle school level?
They would certainly be allowed to volunteer, but we always wanna have a paid coach. And Kristen, you can back me up on this, because a couple of years back, we made sure that we had at least two, which would require that you have the trainings to be hired, such as CPR, AED, and all those things. Which is not the end of the world to do, you're certainly welcome to do that. I just, you know, I'm just being very blunt here, we're out of time. To throw a program together right now is just not going to happen. And, and I'm gonna be also honest with you. I, I am going to be focusing on pulling off a high school season right now, which means that that will take a backseat until I can get to it. And that's, you know, that is what it is. That doesn't mean parents can't help and help set up, I've, I've done that over the years. I just, we, we start games next week and I have half of fields lined right now. And I just lost my golf cart. Is, can I get a motion to get a new golf cart?
What happened?
It just stopped working. Me and George tore apart for an hour today.
Oh, no.
That slows the whole process down, I'm not gonna lie to you.
I'm putting it on Facebook right now, we need a golf cart.
I see Sarah's still awake, maybe she can pull some strength for us.
Comments? I'm sorry, school committee discussion, more discussion about this motion?
I have a, I have another clarifying question. I noticed that, that this motion was, was written differently as far as it was set forth by the MDOE and the Joint Committee versus the MPA. So could you, could somebody tell me what the difference is?
Yeah, the MPA does not regulate.
I know, I guess I know what the MPA is. How is the MDOE different?
Yeah, I'll answer, that's really simple. The MPA regulates high school sports. They, they have no say over the MPA, but this was a joint decision, so we have to look for, we have to look to the DOE to give us guidelines around what we can and can't do. And so primarily, there are two, two of those groups that met that make a difference for us. It's DOE and main school management. And main school management is already, you guys have all seen the liability letter from main school management. So the one I'm mostly focused on there when we wrote that, that motion is the DOE. DOE is the one that says what the distances need to be and all, all those other things that are required in there. So couldn't have put MPA there.
So what, what are the regulations for the DOE?
There's a whole bunch of them. It's, it's about, they have to have, Joel already mentioned some of them. The, the cross-country has to have six-foot trails, the, the, they can't run in packs. The, the, the students, the students, the athletes are supposed to be spaced 14 feet or, or more. The, you know, I mean, all those same, basically all the same regular, the, the recommendations came out from everybody together. So the same things that the, we, we sort of tagged as being the MPA were the Joint Committee's recommendations. So everything that was there for the high school is also there for the middle school, but not because of the MPA. That's why it doesn't say MPA, that's why it says DOE.
But it, it sounds like there's a little bit of a difference with the 14 feet and the stuff like that, correct?
No, no, they're exactly the same.
Oh, okay.
So the big difference is that when you're playing a game, you can take your mask off. If you take your mask off and you're practicing, you're standing around stretching, you have to be 14 feet.
Gotcha, thank you.
And this is what we, the, the language they've been kind of like throwing around is anytime a kid can't catch his breath, they should be taken down. That's a vigorous activity.
Okay.
Not tolerable is what it's called.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about this motion from the school committee? Ms. Shumway?
So I, I know that I've had various conversations about this and some of the changes since the last meeting that we had. My big concern is about, is the middle school students not having anything to do at all? And so I'm just wondering, at one point, there was leaning towards not offering the traditional fall sports schedule because of all of the things that you said. I do think that if we have one bus Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and we're trying to transport three high school teams, right, because golf, they transport themselves, so it would be field hockey, soccer, cross-country, potentially transporting three high school teams with one bus and then trying to then do the same thing for middle school that logistically, it's not happening, it's not going to happen. So I'm wondering what the alternatives could be. I know that your efforts are focused on getting the high school program up and running and have, and complying with all of the regulations. I'm not expecting this huge program to be invented. I'm just wondering what we can look at of things that we already have readily available to us that potentially a parent who could volunteer, two parents who could volunteer, you know, and, and run.
I think, I think the both soccer coaches, and I, I checked in with them last week and just said, this is where things are. Really feel like I haven't been in contact with you guys and I just wanna let you know what's up. And it, it seemed pretty obvious to me that they would be willing to possibly come back and do something for skills and drills. However, I know from talking with Coach Armstrong and Billadu that they're also very happy with what's going on with the Y, which is playing on the weekends and practicing already on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I, I would say that I'm really not comfortable bringing in just volunteers for like a field hockey or cross-country just because, well, honestly, administratively, it's, I mean, it's a liability thing. But I also think it's, it's a step forward in the sense of just not knowing how we run things and the regulations that we run as a school. So I, I guess, I, that would be best-case scenario, Kristen, that I would see happening. If anybody else has a better idea and doesn't agree with that, that I'm open to, you know, you know, just, just let me know and we can head that direction.
I was just wondering more about like club, like a club sport kind of thing, like club, you know, tennis. You know, things that we already have, we have tennis courts and they, this, that's a low-risk category. And not playing for any sort of competition, but just for, you know, fun and getting together and learning some, you know, basic skills and having kind of, you know, round robin competitions amongst each other. We also have pickleball. We also have, you know, we also have frisbees, you know, and, and we have field space. And so I'm just wondering if, and I've been asking for this for a while, to, with some sort of creativity for our students to participate in. If they're not interested, then, you know, no effort is, is needed. But I, I can't imagine that, you know, after being in, in school all day, and then for those students, they don't have access to, they don't have their license, they can't drive around, they can't, you know, so they're going home and, and sitting around are even more isolated, that I can't imagine that if there was something outside of a traditional offering that they wouldn't be interested in participating.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I, I guess the reason I keep hesitating a little bit is because if we offer that through the school, then everything that we just talked about doing down at the high school fields, we're gonna also have to provide. Now, if you're talking about saying, is it possible to schedule field time for people that are willing to come up with volunteers? Absolutely, you know, and have conversations with Lonnie and see if there's anything that's available down there for supervision or for equipment for kids to use. Absolutely, that does, that takes very little time to be able to do that. You know, that's an email and just start that chain. But I thought, I thought you were talking about like what we could do with our coaches that would be willing to work with us.
Right, and if they, and if they were willing in the traditional sense, but I was getting, I was hearing that we didn't have the coaches available any longer to, to create any sort of, you know, program, skills or drills or not. And so, and I, and I understand that, and I understand that there might be some people who normally are in that position, that they're not interested in, in adding to the risk, and that's okay, no judgment. I'm just wondering if there could be something offered. I just think it's really important that our students are out there moving. I mean, there's all this data that talks about how kids learn better when they're moving, but they also, you know, relieve stress and, and learn better even if they're not moving while they're learning, but outside of school. So I just, I just don't wanna vote no because it's not feasible to, to have a sports program in the sense at the middle school level of how we've always had it. But I don't want my no vote to mean that they go home, you know, at, at two o'clock and there's nothing offered to them. I think that that would be, that that would be too bad because like I said again, I think that we can offer something safe for them to participate rather than leaving them to their own devices.
Sure, yeah, I follow your, your thinking and I, I, yeah, I think you're saying basically what we were really saying at the high school is like if, if students don't wanna participate, they don't have to, but we certainly don't wanna take that away from those that don't. I, I actually do expect to be having some intramural conversations with Mr. Hodgkins about the high school level tomorrow anyways. So I, I, I think that's what we're talking about, to just give an opportunity, and if it doesn't play out, then at least we gave them the opportunity. So, yep, I hear it, I'll be on it.
Ms. Bell?
Joel, what about field hockey? Is that, is that being offered through the Y?
Yes.
It is.
Yes, yeah, actually Coach Merrill, the high school coach is working with those students, I believe. I, I, I thought that was the plan and I haven't had confirmation, but I believe Lonnie shared with Mr. Hodgkins and I last Friday when we met with him that she was.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more school board discussion? Well, let's move this motion then. So the motion is to move forward with middle school fall sports. Mr. Petrowski?
You're muted.
I'm unmuted. Better vote no on this.
Ms. Dykett?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Ms. Bells?
Okay, I think I do need to clarify something. If I say yes, then if they wanna do the skills and drills, they can. But if I vote no, they can't. Is that correct?
That's my interpretation.
Okay, so I'll vote yes.
If no one else wants to say it.
I'm glad you did. So Ms. Bells is voting yes. Ms. Shumway?
Well, then that brings up another question. So then if, if it's yes for skills and drills options, and then does that mean no intramural possibility? Like I, I was going to offer up, if however this voted, I was gonna offer up as another motion about intramurals at the middle school level. So I am just wondering that if I say yes to skills and drills, does that mean yes to intramurals? Or if I say no to this, does this mean no fall sports and yes, then I can have an alternate motion? Go ahead, Mr. Hodgkin.
Thank you. I would, I guess I, I have a different interpretation. I, from my perspective, if you vote no on this, it means essential that there'll be no scheduling other teams to, to play. We're not, Joel, not be expected to put together any sort of competitions against other schools. I don't think it, I'm not interpreting it that that would mean that we couldn't do something with our with our middle school students to create some sort of activity for them.
Okay.
Mr. Petrowski?
The interpretation that the superintendent gave is the reason why I voted no. I'm not interested in having a schedule with other M V, M V C teams or other teams in the area. I am interested in hoping that we do provide alternatives. Obviously, the Y is providing an alternative. Kristen brought some wonderful ideas that she's brought up before, that we could still do some things with other kids until the weather got too cold. But I am against trying to schedule regular programs, you know, with other schools.
So let's, let's do this vote this way. If you vote for the middle school motion, it will be, you know, scheduled. If you vote against it, it will be against the schedule. And then we could bring up a motion, or we could just have an understanding amongst the consensus with, with Joel that where possible, there would be intramural sports offered to the middle school students. So what's your pleasure, school committee?
I'm so confused.
I'm totally confused.
You're totally confused? So the way Mr. Petrowski put it, he's voting against it because he's not interested in having any kind of a schedule for Joel to try to, to have a schedule for middle school sports.
For competition? Or any kind of schedule for skills and drills and stuff?
No, not skills and drills. This is competition schedule.
Okay.
Okay. And what can happen at the end of this, depending on the result of this vote, is that you could make another motion that encourages our athletic department to make available activities for the middle school students. Maybe Ms. Shumway, you can start to craft such a motion.
Should we vote on this one first?
Well, probably.
Or revote on it because I think I will probably change my vote.
Okay, let's start over again. Mr. Petrowski?
No.
Mr. Petrowski is still no. Ms. Dykett?
No.
Ms. Bell?
No.
Ms. Shumway?
No.
Ms. Gires knows as well for all of the reasons given before. So that's unanimously against. That motion fails. Ms. Shumway, do you have another motion to offer to the school committee?
It says I move. That's all I've gotten so far.
That's all you have so far? Superintendent Hodgkin?
I'm trying to, well, I guess I should wait and hear, but I'm, my sense is maybe Joel can weigh in. I think we've got the direction. I'm not sure what motion to be. We're not going to have the interscholastic type of activities for the, for the middle school. And I think I'm hearing pretty general consensus that the school committee wants us to find something to do with our middle school kids to keep them active and engaged during the fall. And I think that will be pretty clearly captured in the minutes. I'm not sure how much structure the school committee wants to put around that, but.
There's usually not too much of a discussion captured in our minutes, and so I think that's the concern of the school committee. I think there's probably consensus on this school committee entirely. Speak up if you disagree with me, school committee folks, that we all agree that physical activity is a really positive thing for all of our students. And in the absence of a regular athletics for our middle school folks, we would really appreciate it if something was offered to our middle school students.
So to that end, I mean, I, I'm the one who reviews the minutes, and I'm the one who believes minutes should be fairly brief. And they should not capture five and a half hours of a conversation if there happens to be a five and a half hour conversation. But I think the salient points of a, of the committee meeting should be captured. For instance, that there was essentially consensus or guidance from the school committee to do something with respect to scheduling or organizing activities for our middle school students in light of the vote to not have an interscholastics thing is, I think we, Colleen is listening to me as I speak, so I'm sure that can be captured in the minutes.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Show me thumbs up or down, please.
I have a motion if I just crafted. I would feel, it's not that I don't trust you. I would just feel more comfortable if there was a motion with direction so that it's very clear as to what the intention of the school committee is.
Read your motion?
Sure. I move to, I move a middle school intramural program is offered in place of the fall 2020 sports season. You'll have to make sure my English and tense is correct when you write this down. Okay, I move a middle school intramural program is offered that is in compliance with the regulations set forth by the M D O E and Joint Committee. That's what I have.
Read it again, please.
Okay. I move that a middle school intramural program is offered in place of the fall 2020 sports season that is in compliance with the regulations set forth by the main D O E and Joint Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dykett. Is, does that motion reflect to both Mr. Stoneton and Superintendent Hodgkin what it is we've been trying to say? You folks?
Works for me.
Works for you? Mr. Stoneton, it works for you. Okay, is there any further discussion by the school committee?
About this topic?
Yes. This motion.
Okay, I'm just thinking, so if part of the intramural is the, the soccer, involves the soccer coaches and things like that, is that still considered a paid position? What about the other? How does that all work?
No, if, if we have professionals working with our students, it needs to be a paid position so that Joel has proper supervision over what those people are doing with our students.
So even if it's pickleball or tennis or things like that?
We need to have proper supervision over our students. Those need to be properly trained, and Joel has to feel comfortable with those people having contact with our students.
Okay, great.
Otherwise, it cannot be a school-sponsored activity.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to clarify that, when I had said asking volunteers to run a program, I didn't mean it in the sense of volunteering and not getting paid. I meant it in as a community member stepping forward and saying that they would be interested in supervising that program for our students. So I don't want there to be.
I understood it that way, Ms. Shumway.
I just want to make sure the community understood it that way.
Okay. You good? Okay, I'll call the roll. Mr. Petrowski?
I will vote for the motion, yes.
Yes. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Gires, yay as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to accept the revisions to the reopening of school buildings 2020, 2021, long form.
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. First, public opinion. So any of you folks that want to weigh in on the changes made to the long form?
Ginny, I'm not sure they've seen it.
It's attached to all the agenda materials.
Well, apparently it is.
It's attached to all of the agenda materials that have been online on our, on our school, on our school website. So if you want to weigh in, now is your time to do that. Seeing none? School committee discussion. Mr. Hodgkin, or sorry, Superintendent Hodgkin, do you like to describe or speak to those changes?
Yeah, these are the changes that I actually mentioned at the last meeting, and the, and the school committee asked me to take them back to the back to school committee. I had specifically spoke about the mask break. And then Dr. McConnell spoke about the teacher, staff, or teachers in a room can have mask breaks. I'm trying to read and look away from the camera at the same time. So if staff or teachers share room mask breaks can occur that are, if they are distance greater than six feet apart, those are, those are what we brought back to the committee, and the committee recommended those specifically. I can tell you that the first clarification about mask breaks by the students, that came directly from the Department of Education, and I spoke to them myself. And that guidance was from them, and that is the practice we've been using. So if for some reason you vote no on this tonight, then we will have done this incorrectly for the first, whatever number of days of school, seven, six days of school we've been in, so.
Thank you. Discussion from the school committee? Seeing none?
Ginny?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Dykett.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that this really, we're six feet apart in my school, and the kids wear their masks all day, but we do allow them to do a self-regulated, like a five minute, and we do, I notice I've, and it now has boiled down to about two kids who I usually have to remind to put them back on, but the kids have been really great about it. They don't seem to abuse it. And it's nice for them to be able to have that choice if they need to take it off for a few minutes. So I appreciate the fact that that is working hopefully in the schools as well there.
Yeah, well, that's great. Am I muted?
Nope.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Superintendent Hodgkin. Thanks.
Some reason I've lost my picture, so I apologize.
Now you're muted.
You're muted, Superintendent Hodgkin, but we can see you. Okay, give it a thumbs up. So seeing, is there any further discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none. Mr. Petrowski? You have to unmute.
Yes, I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Dykett?
Yep, yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Gires votes yay as well. Motion passes unanimously. No new business? Public comment? So to the public that has any comment about Winthrop education in general, now is your time to type it in, in the chat. Next time, maybe I'll play my accordion during this time. Because if I had a chat, if I had to type some of the things I'd want to say, it would take a while. Hi, Colleen.
Hey, I have a voice again.
Oh, there you go.
And a picture.
Okay, life is good.
I guess.
Yeah. Okay, I see no folks in the chat. School committee comments. I'll start with you as always, Ms. Dykett.
Just congratulations to everyone for, I know Karen's note was a lot of what we experienced too. It's gotten better, and I just thank everyone for all of their hard work, and I know people are going home exhausted. But thank you, and thank you for what's doing, doing what is best for our students.
Superintendent Hodgkin? You have to unmute.
Got it, got it. So before we go on, I just want to, to thank Janet for her comments last time because I used them. I think what Mrs. Chris was talking about, I was hearing a lot of that, and people were really nervous, scared, angry, I mean, all those emotions. And Janet, when you were on last time, you talked about how much energy bringing the kids back to the building did to you, how uplifting it was and whatever. And I tried to share that message since then, and I probably wouldn't have thought to share that except for your comments last time. And just got a lot of really positive feedback from all levels, from grade school, middle school, high school, teachers talking about how true that is, that once the kids got back here, which is the reason we all do this job, that how much energy it brought and how much more palatable, you know, how they could go home being exhausted and, you know, and beat to death, but just feeling really good about, about the fact that they were doing what they're doing. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Petrowski, your comments?
I had the opportunity to talk to a number of parents and grandparents about the kids going back to school, and everything has been positive from them. They talk about the excitement the kids have had. And I'm sure that there's no question that we've, we've got some people here who have just exhausted themselves, whether they be teachers, administrators, the superintendent, you know, in making sure that all things are going well. And I congratulate all of them, but I think the biggest thing is just this general attitude in the community. Thank you for taking them back, for opening the schools up. Now, I did have one little problem. I had some people also within that nice group who said they need to go to school five days a week. What's the problem here? I said, I don't think that's going to happen. So not for a while anyway. And I also want to comment a little bit on the, the issue with the lunches and how this thing, you know, it came about through a Facebook, a Facebook discussion, which I happen to be in that particular group. And, and I found it really interesting because the problem became that it wasn't that anybody was complaining about Winthrop as much as they were saying, well, you know, over here in X, Y, Z school, they're getting this thing, which tended in most cases to be they got chicken nuggets, or they got fried tuna or something like that. But it wasn't just a sandwich. However, when I get talking not only to the superintendent and to a few other people, and as well as talking to Chef Aaron, I learned a lot about the system, which I never really thought of. And I think, for instance, I should have immediately said, you know, one of the reasons why we've got to demolish the old grade school is because we don't have enough room for these kids. And when people described it tonight, talking about how we had to have six different shifts in there because of the way we do spacing, we've still got a couple of classes that are being used for it. But the big thing was that they do not have the same facilities in terms of preparing food that we have also at the middle school and at the high school. And so that's going to make a big difference. The other thing is that they have more kids to prepare for, so they got to start earlier in the day. So it's kind of hard to cook real early because by the time the food gets to the kids four hours later, it's a little soggy. But the idea of the sandwiches worked. I also found out that they only had one day where sun butter was on the menu for the meals, and that was on Friday, although I think there is an alternative. Part of that, of course, is because of the, the allergy situation, which is less this year because there's only a few kids with the allergy. because there's only a few kids with the allergies versus the numbers that have gone up to the middle school, that the bigger numbers are up there now. But they did supply real peanut butter and real jelly to go home on Tuesdays. But they also had the problem of the ham sandwich problem, which is that most of those kids, and you probably, those of you who have kids and know these kids, they take those packs that come home with the food for Wednesday and they throw it in the corner and then they open it up sometime on Wednesday. If they were getting something that would spoil, we'd have massive cases of food poisoning. So I've had a busy week talking to a lot of people, but good. I think, uh, for the most part that we've got to just pat people on the back and say, great job. You're doing well. The community really enjoys having the kids back at school. And I think this four days a week is really outstanding.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
I just wanted to say I got to speak with some of the teachers and they just expressed how, how important it was to have those eight days before school started, as well as having Wednesdays, uh, what a difference it's made. And they're, they're very appreciative about it. And I was just really glad that, that we could do that for them and, and it worked well for them.
Thank you. I'd like to piggyback on everyone else. I don't want to talk too long. I've talked enough this night, but some of the parents that I ran into, much like Joe reported, are just so happy that their children had the opportunity to go back to school in person. They hope that that can continue. And some of the other comments are some comments that I heard from Ms. Bell's, uh, actually late last spring, was that their kids are realizing, well, that they're saying that they will never again take for granted, um, in-person education. And I think that that's, that's a wonderful thing for some of our children to be realizing. And hopefully all will. I'll, I'll end, I'll end tonight's meeting with the same, um, word that I have for the last two meetings. This is all about cooperation. I'm gonna say this and then I'll, I'll give you a chance, Mr. Hodgkin.
Um. Me, here.
What?
No, it's, it's not me. Did you forget, Ms. Shumway?
Yeah, I did.
I was gonna let you say what you were, what you were gonna say and then I would have, I would have let you know.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, so where was I? So, uh, the word that I think is so important for our entire country is the word cooperation. I think that the opposite of that, which is rebelliousness, has, um, has, has gotten way too much play in our country. And, um, I think that we all need to understand, no matter what we think, in order to get this and keep this in-person education, that we all have to cooperate. All of our students have to cooperate, our staff has to cooperate, and our parents need to cooperate. And that means, you know, we can't regulate as a school system where your child or your family goes. But, um, we need for you to be cautious so that our school system can stay in-person. So we appreciate the cooperation, no matter what you think about this, um, this pandemic. And I, I thank you for all of that. Um, Ms. Shumway?
So I just had, um, one quick thing to add in addition to everything else that has already been said by the school committee. For, I know that we've lost a lot of the students who potentially were on, on the, um, the meeting tonight. But for those parents who, um, who still are on, if you could please share the sentiment that to your, to your children that participated in this and gave their feedback to Josh and wrote up their, um, their feelings about this one way or the other, that it's, their opinion's much appreciated. And even if the school committee's decision didn't align with their point of view, that to encourage them to continue to be part of the process because it's so important that they do that. Um, I was really, I'm really grateful that they have a student representative like Josh, who is so involved and is so willing to get them involved. And, um, so just continue to encourage them to speak up and to voice their opinion, even if it didn't turn out the way that they wanted it, um, this time. Because I don't want them to get discouraged and think, oh, like, because I'm a kid, I don't, you know, my, my opinion doesn't matter. They don't listen to me. So I just wanted to make sure that our students knew that.
Ms. Shumway, I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Bell?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, uh, Mr. Petrowski? Unmute, please. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Geyer, yay. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody, um, for all of your participation. Really appreciate it. I hope you have a good rest of the evening, what is left of it.